Good afternoon and Happy New Year, everyone. Happy 2025. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in the chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Louie Jean,
Here.
Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Pen, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Worrell.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. It's also great to see our 14th Counselor here. Mike, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Pastor Don Nannstedt of Our Savior Lutheran Church invited by Counselor Coletta Zapata. And if I got the name wrong, Counselor Coletta Zapata will correct me. After the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is with great respect and admiration that I welcome Pastor Don Nannstedt of Our Savior Lutheran Church to join us today. When I met with Pastor earlier, I called him the co-conspirator in good trouble. He's been the quiet, steady hand that provides but also nudges us along towards a more just city, and certainly so in East Boston. Through his leadership, this church has become a steadfast pillar of refuge, compassion, and advocacy. From its founding in 1911 by Norwegian immigrants as a Siemens mission to its present role as a vibrant inclusive sanctuary, the church's history reflects an enduring mission to welcome all, especially those who have felt unwelcome elsewhere, with acceptance and dignity. So, thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. Just really quickly, I do have to say that Pastor Nannstedt, in addition to providing spiritual guidance, again, he has been that co-conspirator of good trouble in the community. I'm looking at Jesse Purvis because he was a part of one of the campaigns that Pastor Don had housed, but in his church basement was the birthplace of Noah in the 1990s, when the term affordable housing was vilified and people didn't want those people in East Boston. Pastor Nannstedt housed them. His basement was the headquarters for No East to Casino, which was an underdog campaign that was outspent and outorganized, and he created a home for them. Today, he opens his doors for the East Boston Soup Kitchen, City Life Viva Urbana, Ebec Mashkosh, and I think I might have missed a couple. But again, he is a leader who has tirelessly fostered connections and compassion, compassion across generation and cultures, and he embodies the very values that drive our council's mission. So, I'm really excited to have you here. Thank you so much for taking time and coming here in this cold weather. Pastor Don.
That saved me half of what I was going to say. Thank you. I want to tell you just a little bit about our place. I can't interfere before anybody without doing that, and that is, when I came to East Boston in the fall of 1980 to go to study at Boston University and serve this little church part-time, I had been slightly warned about the neighborhood but hadn't really paid attention. And when I got there, within about two weeks, the Navy declared Maverick Square, and I live on the edge of Maverick Square, 24 hours off limits to Navy personnel because there had been so much violence there. And in fact, a sailor had been killed that summer. Read about it in the national news. So, that wasn't the best of starts. Boston University wasn't exactly what I should have been looking for. I would be walking down Comm Ave, and I'd see a plane in the sky, and I think, oh, I wish I was on that plane. I don't care where it's going. I just wish I was on it. But about a year and a half later, the way I describe it, as magic happened. Two Catholic sisters from Holy Redeemer, a large Catholic church around the corner, I knew them from some community meetings. They came and said, could we set up a little space over here for two small organizations they were forming? Ebec, East Boston Actuarial Committee Council, and Harbor Me, which was for domestic violence, women suffering domestic violence. And I said yes. And soon, those two organizations had cubicles down both sides of the basement and started to outgrow each other, at which point one left and Noah was born. So, things happened, but it happened because of two Catholic sisters who threw the doors of my church open. And I had to call Sister Carol a couple of years ago in Louisville, Kentucky, and say, Sister Carol, you changed my life. You changed my life. I mean, I came from a small town in Wisconsin, a farm town, under 1,000 people. I had lived in Milwaukee, and I had lived in New Haven, and I had lived in a town of 60,000, but that was nothing like East Boston. But from that time on, East Boston started to grow on me, and I'm there 44 years later. So, something must have happened. Some kind of love affair must have occurred in the meantime. I often will be standing in the front of the church and nobody's around, and I'll think to myself, man, somebody's been looking out for me. Because I started in doing all the wrong things, making a bad decision, and in the end, it has been the most wonderful thing I've ever done in my life. So, some of which you have heard. By the 1960s, that old Norwegian church had a brief burst of African-American families in the neighborhood with a young charismatic pastor. It lasted four or five years. It blew up. A lot of the black families fled East Boston in the violence of the late 70s. If you want to know about that, ask Sal Lamatina, because he was a teenager, and one of his friends was a member of one of those families. So, it was a tough place at the time. In the 1980s, we sponsored Southeast Asians collaborating with Ebec. They became our partners. We ended up sponsoring 125 people from Cambodia and Vietnam. And then, the organization in the basement of church became what I'm sure had to be the largest community-based organization in the city, community-based, that was offering a range of services, civil rights, finding housing, whatever. My job was working with the Community Disorders Unit of the Police Department, working with getting people referred into mental health treatment, and organizing boys' and girls' clubs. At 50, I was camping again with 35 teenagers. It was a blast. It was wonderful. So, it's just turned from one thing to the next, which in many cases, just sort of would spin out of its own life. In the year about 2,000, we were very much involved with Clipper Ship, which is a small housing development right next to Maverick. And BHA wanted to take it. They didn't meet BHA's qualifications. The families fought back. We fought with them. And the families, as I said, ran the table on the BHA. I couldn't believe it. They ran the table, and they were there for another 15 years, and now, of course, it's gone. And those beautiful high-rise Legoland buildings are over there. So, we figured, we did a study once, just guessing at the numbers of people who enter our building, and we figured 93% of the people who walk through the doors of our church are not members of our church. Every week, between the organizations and such, there is about 100 at Soup Kitchen, for example. And that's what it's been like. We have sheltered people that were fire victims and immigrants. You may have heard the story when we had 44 Haitian and Venezuelans in that small church. We didn't know we were getting so many. We said, sure, we'll take those people that got kicked out of the tents in Quincy, not knowing what the numbers were. So, we had 44 people in 4,000 square feet on two levels, you know, two and two. So, we only have one family left and one Colombian person that's been there. This church has had 36 members when I arrived, and it has grown to 20. That's what I told our bishop a few years ago. She wanted to know how it went. Said, we had 36, we've built it up to 20. So, I tell you that because you realize we couldn't possibly do these things alone. It was always community, community groups, volunteers, organizations, et cetera. So, that's my opening remarks. Could we bow our heads and offer ourselves time for prayer? You may rise. Amen. Thank you.
You will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Counselor Coletta Zapata, and thank you Pastor Don for your words and your work, and for reminding me that we've been at protests in East Boston together. But thank you for really making sure that the church is a reflection of how we are to care for each other. So, really appreciated your words and your opening remarks. Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the record to reflect that Counselors Durkin, Weber, and Worrell are now present and with us in chambers? Thank you. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of December 11, 2024. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. There is a nay. Counselor Flynn, if you would like to speak. Okay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the December 11 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our Honored the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docets number 0112 to 0115?
Document number 0112, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year '25 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $6,637,486 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year '25 impact of increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between Transdev and its bus drivers. Document number 0113, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for fiscal year '25 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $6,637,486 to cover the impact of fiscal year '25 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between Transdev and its bus drivers on the city's transportation contract with the vendor. The terms of the contract is July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2028. The major provisions of the contract include a market rate adjustment, an increase for regular wages, and an increase in minimum weekly hours from 31 to 35 filed in the office of the city clerk on January 6, 2025. Document number 0114, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year '25 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $421,318 to provide funding for the mayor's office of housing for the fiscal year increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888, Mayor's Office of Housing. And document number 0115, message in order for a supplemental appropriation for the mayor's office of housing for fiscal year '25 in the amount of $421,318 to cover the fiscal year '25 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888, Mayor's Office of Housing. The terms of the contracts are October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2027. The major provisions of the contracts include wage increases of 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of the contract term, and flat amounts of $250, $500, $900, and $800 to be added to annual salaries in January of each fiscal year filed in the office of the city clerk on January 6, 2025.
Thank you. Docets number 0112 through 0115 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docet number 0116?
Document number 0116, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $860,169.70 in the form of a grant for the One Stop Career Center Grant awarded by the Mass Hyatt Department of Career Services to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund comprehensive career services and resources to unemployed job seekers, such as reviewing job postings, career counseling, and job coaching, educations, and skills training, and job placement assistance.
Thank you. Document number 0116 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docets number 0117 to 0119?
Document number 10117, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $593,750 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '25 Hazmat Airmark Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the needs of the hazardous materials response teams specified in line items 8324-000 and 8324-0050 of the Fiscal Year '25 General Appropriation Act. Document number 0118, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $395,746 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year '24 Burn Justice Assistance Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a domestic violence management analyst at the Family Justice Center, a hub and center of responsibility coordinator, and a technology coordinator for the multiple data collection, reporting, and record management systems. And document number 0119, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year '22 COVID-19 SADV Trust Fund awarded by the Mass Department of Public Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund two full-time domestic violence advocates who will work with social service agency partners at the Boston Public Health Commission Family Justice Center.
Thank you. Docets number 0117 to 0119 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docet number 0120?
Document number 0120, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $36,638 in the form of a grant for fiscal year '23 Mass Trails Grant awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the enhancement of trails and trail access in the Dorchester community.
Thank you. Document number 0120 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docet number 0121?
Document number 0121, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the donation of a Vectra Fitness Cable Multi-Station Weight Machine valued at $12,599 donated by Fitness Equipment Service of New England. The purpose of this donation is to enhance the fitness program and facilities at BCYF Rosendale Center for the benefit of the Rosendale neighborhood.
Thank you. Document number 0121 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docet number 0122?
Document number 0122, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation of 200 rakes donated by Northeastern University's Department of City and Community Engagement. The purpose of this donation is to be used during the Love Your Block program, which organizes residents to do cleanup in their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I thank Northeastern University for this generous donation of 200 rakes. At this time, I seek suspension and passage of this docket so that the city can accept them. All in favor of suspension and passage of docket number 0122, say aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Document number 0122 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docet number 0123?
Document number 0123, message in order for your approval in order to declare surplus city-owned computers that are no longer of use to city employees. Once the Department of Innovation Technology determines that a city-owned computer has reached the end of its useful life and has little to no resale value, the department wishes to donate the surplus computers to a 501(c)(3) charterable organization pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30b, Section 15. The computers will be sanitized by the Department of Innovation and Technology in accordance with industry standards to remove any city data prior to donation. The computers will be then refurbished by a charterable organization for future use by Boston residents to close the digital divide.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I want to thank the Do-It Department, especially Carrie, formerly of City Council, for putting this forward so that the city is able to donate computers that we are no longer using. At this time, I seek suspension and passage of this docket, docket number 0123. All those in favor, the chair recognizes. Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, on this docket, how do we ensure that privacy is protected and respected before we donate these computers to nonprofits? I want to make sure and have a commitment from Boston's IT Department in writing that there will be no information that will be sent out inadvertently with people's social security number, name, address, any type of information. There's auto theft taking place through the computer, through the phones. I want to make sure that we do our due diligence to ensure that privacy is protected for Boston residents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are you opposing the suspension and passage?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. This docket will be sent to the City Services and Innovation Technology, and I'm sure Carrie Jordan, formerly of the City Council, will be able to just send us something so that we can know that Do-It is on top of their, on everything that they do, that they will be able to wipe it down so that none of the issues that you raised, Counselor Flynn, are an issue. So, document number 0123 will be sent to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docet number 0124?
Document number 0124, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Jay Andres Bernal as an alternative, as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring July 1, 2027.
Thank you. Document number 0124 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docets number 0125 and 0126?
Document number 0125, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of, a reappointment of Michael O'Neill as a member of the Boston School Committee for a term expiring January 2, 2029. Document number 0126, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Sandra Kutts as an Associate Commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2027.
Thank you. Docets number 0125 and 0126 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0127?
Document number 0127, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Landmarks Commission for City Council Action on the Designation of Petition Number 224.07, Boston City Hall, 1 City Hall Square, 02201, as a landmark in effect after February 7, 2025, if not acted upon.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Louie Jean. Today, we celebrate a milestone in Boston's story, a moment that honors not just a building but a living symbol of our city's longstanding dedication to democracy, civic participation, and architectural boldness. With immense gratitude, I stand here to mark the official designation of Boston City Hall as a landmark, and I hope you all will support me in pulling this for a vote today. Since its completion in 1968, Boston City Hall has been a focal point for governance and community, recognizing its bold brutalist design. This architectural style, marked by its striking geometric forms and raw concrete construction, dared to challenge conventional ideas and symbolized a new era of transparency, modernity, and accessibility in governance. This building stands as more than just a functional space. It's a physical embodiment of civic identity and a testament to Boston's willingness to innovate and embrace bold ideas. Every day, as I walk into City Hall, I'm in awe of the historical moments that have unfolded within these walls and the legacy of civil servants who have shaped our city from this very space. It's a constant reminder of the immense responsibility we all share in serving the people of Boston. This landmark designation encompasses more than just the building's exterior. It celebrates the brick paving that seamlessly connects the plaza outside the brick floors inside, the iconic third-floor lobby, the ceremonial staircases, and key spaces like the mayor's lobby, the bronze hallway, and the city council chamber. Each element reflects thoughtful design and vision for a collaborative, transparent government. We also recognize that this designation is a commitment to the future. The care and preservation of Boston City Hall is no small task. I want to express my heartfelt thanks to Commissioner Amon Shelton and the property management team for their stewardship of this building and the plaza. I want to commend Commissioner McCosh for ensuring that this study report acknowledged the work that still needs to take place to make this building fully accessible to everyone, a commitment that we must carry forward. And finally, thank you to the work of the Landmarks Commission itself, who shepherded so much of this conversation from start to finish. The conversation about this building extends beyond its architecture. It intersects with how we adapt its use for the need for our current workforce and future workforce. Boston City Hall remains a vital space for community gatherings, civic engagement, and urban planning discussions. This summer, we will welcome the American Conference on Architecture and Design, where we will celebrate this designation on a global stage. It's a moment to reflect on how this building has shaped conversations about urban renewal, accessibility, and preservation while also serving as a bold architectural and cultural icon. Finally, after years of debate, even calls to tear down this building, I am proud to stand here today wearing my City Hall pin to reaffirm our commitment to preserving and protecting this landmark. Boston City Hall is not just a place, it's an idea, a catalyst, and a home for everyone who serves our great city. So, I urge my colleagues to vote in support of this designation today. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have some questions and concerns. I support designating this a landmark. I love this building. I've probably worked here as long as anyone on the council. And I do want to see it be landmarked. I do have some questions as it relates to the impact this will have on persons with disabilities. That is a critical issue facing many people that come to City Hall. Just as an example, this morning, I got into this meeting here at 11 o'clock, and I'd like to talk to my friend Mike over there, but Mike couldn't get into the room because the wasn't, the door wasn't working where he could push the button. It wasn't fully accessible for persons with disabilities. That's a challenge. That's important for us to acknowledge that, that it's not fully accessible. And when a building is not fully accessible, it's our job to ensure that it meets code and it's up to date. So, I'd like to have a hearing to learn how we can work together in ensuring that this is the most accessible building for persons with disabilities in our seniors. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Probably the most controversial stance I'll take this year is the fact that I love this building. I love brutalist architecture. I think it's a gorgeous building. All of the concerns that Counselor Flynn brought up, fair and valid. I do support moving this forward. I think we have to take action on this before February 7, if the agenda reads correctly. And so, I would like to push this forward towards a vote. I think that there was a long conversation, I was not there, my staff member was there, about ADA compliance. There was also a commitment to working with Amon, who is the facilities chief or commissioner, I forget his exact title, but talking about how to ensure repairs and maintenance even though there is this preservationist lens on this building now. So, I think these conversations have taken place, both privately and publicly, through the Landmarks Commission in their last meeting. So, I do support moving this forward as a council body and would urge my colleagues to consider the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata, and your controversial take, I agree with you, especially seeing this building at night. It really is, it really is a stunning building. Counselor Flynn, you have a point of order pursuant to a rule?
Yes, I did object.
Objection to this, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
I just want to thank Counselor Flynn for his concerns. I did want to outline that within the study report, there have been two versions of the study report. So, the first study report that was authored did not have So the first study report that was authored did not have intense care given to the future plans for City Hall, but the version that stands before us today actually talks about disabilities, talks about accessibility. And I do want to share that I personally was on the hearing where the Landmarks Commission designated this building, and Commissioner McCosh spoke to all the work that she did to ensure that the study report reflects care for disabilities community and care for those who, and there's a lot of work to do. So I just want to share that all of that is actually written within the study report and all the changes that, and the future work that will be done in terms of the disabilities community. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I know with the last council meeting, once there was an objection to a particular order, that the conversation would end. Is that still accurate, Madam Chair?
Yes, I needed to confirm with the clerk and with, as you saw me speaking to our council. Oh, apologies. I needed to confirm with our clerk and with our council that that applies here because it's a communication, so it's different from what we normally, a resolution or something of that nature, which is why I was confirming with them that yes, you objected to it. There's no additional conversation, and it is being sent to committee.
But there was a deliberate conversation after the objection.
I confirmed with the clerk and with our council. I did not hear the word objection, but I do now hear your word objection, and it will be sent to committee, and there are lights on, there will be no further discussion on this matter. The, a point of order, Counselor Durkin, what is your point of order?
Am I allowed to push for the roll call vote of the committee?
No, right, because it's a matter of first introduced. But you can, at the next council meeting, if you would like to pull it from the green sheets, you may. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number, dockets number 0128 to 0133?
Docket number 0128, communication received from the Police Commissioner, Michael A. Cox, in accordance with Section 3 of the Boston Trust Act regarding Civil Immigration Detainer Results for Calendar Year 2024. Docket number 0129, communication received from Timothy J. Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board, regarding a special election schedule for a vacant retirement board seat. Docket number 0130, communication received from Timothy J. Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board, regarding the resignations of Daniel J. Green and Michael D. O'Reilly from the Boston Retirement Board, effective December 18, 2024. Docket number 0131, communication received from Kai Roushen, Chief of Planning, regarding a proposed minor modification to the Washington Park Urban Renewal Plan. Docket number 0132, communication received from Counselor Coletta Zapata regarding the report of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Boston Rising: Building a Resilient City on a Hill Through Local Climate Action. And docket number 0133, communication received from Counselor Flynn regarding continued elevator challenges at the Ruth Barkley Apartments.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Gabriela Coletta Zapata, as this is a communication, limiting discussion on this to two minutes. So Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As we step into 2025 and embark on the second year of our legislative calendar, we do so with an unwavering focus on one of the greatest challenges of our time: climate change. Today, I am honored and proud to present a committee report entitled Boston Rising: Building a Resilient City on a Hill Through Local Climate Action. Climate change is not a distant issue, it's a present and pressing reality that touches every corner of our city. Rising sea levels, extreme weather, and environmental degradation threaten the health, safety, and stability of our community, with the greatest burden falling on our most vulnerable residents. This report serves as a roadmap for how Boston can continue to lead with bold equitable solutions rooted in local action. Boston's history has always been one of leadership, and in the face of potential federal rollbacks on environmental protections and diminishing support for climate resilience, our leadership is needed now more than ever. This report highlights the initiatives and policies we have implemented to safeguard our city from creating the Office of Climate Resilience, to expanding food recovery programs, and integrating environmental justice into our public school curricula. I extend gratitude to Mayor Wu for her leadership and to the countless organizations, volunteers, and youth advocates who helped shape these strategies. Their dedication to addressing environmental challenges has illuminated our path forward in ensuring that our climate action is not just effective, but it is equitable. This report also looks ahead. It outlines forward-thinking recommendations, like establishing a municipal climate bank and utilizing green bonds to close the almost or estimated $4 billion price tag it will take to fortify our 47-mile coastline. In light of the incoming presidential administration's commitment to reducing funding for environmental organizations and their affiliated grant programs, it is more crucial than ever for municipalities for Boston to take the lead in combating the climate crisis. As this federal support diminishes, local and state-level actions will be key to ensuring that environmental, that critical environmental efforts continue. So let this report be a call to action. With equity at the heart of our mission, we must rise together to meet the challenges of the climate crisis head-on. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata, and thank you for that report. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana to speak on one of the communications. You have the floor, and limited to two minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to request that docket number 0128 be sent to committee.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could we please send docket number 0128 to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice? Thank you. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. And, Mr. Clerk, could we please amend the record to reflect that Counselor Tanya Fernandes Anderson is present and now with us? Okay, yeah, and the remaining dockets, dockets number 0128, 0129, oh, docket number 0129, docket number 0130, docket number 0131, docket number 0132, and docket number 0133 will be placed on file. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions, and as was displayed, we will now be using this clock. Michelle sent out an email regarding refiles to ensure that, to ensure that refiles, that we can move this meeting along. Refiles will be limited to a minute, 30 seconds to a minute discussion by the lead sponsors so that we can keep on moving. In pursuant to Rule 39, for new motions, orders, and resolutions, discussion is limited to three minutes. For the offering sponsor, two minutes for any other counselor, as stated in Rule 39. The appropriate time for discussion is at a hearing or at a working session. I see that there are two lights on. I'm not sure what they are on, so I'm going to call on Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, this is regarding?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding docket 0128, I just want to ask the chair of the committee a question, if possible.
I will allow you to ask one question to Counselor Santana, as the docket is in committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the council, to the chair of the committee, Counselor Santana, would we be having a hearing on docket 0128 to discuss the memo from the Police Commissioner?
The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Yes, I think that's what my intention to do, so that's why I asked to be sent to committee, and my team and I will discuss that and hopefully be able to have a hearing.
Thank you. Counselor, we are moving on. Counselor Orrell, is this for motions, orders, and resolutions? Okay, thank you. Okay, so understanding that with refiles are limited to 30 seconds to a minute, and on new dockets, we're doing three minutes pursuant to Rule 39, and any counselor who's a co-sponsor or anyone else who would like to speak, limited to two minutes. Thank you, Neil, for not only covering for Dossi today, but for also using this clock, which I am not professional at, but my other colleagues are, so we will definitely show grace as we try to make use of this clock today. The chair recognized, oh, Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0134?
Docket number 0134, Counselor Orrell offered the following: Ordinance to Enhance Driveway Accessibility.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Orrell. Counselor Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counselor Mejia as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Mejia, so added. Counselor Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. My office filed this ordinance after hearing from constituents who've been frustrated by cars blocking their driveways, making it difficult for people to get in and out from their driveways. We work closely with Commissioner Grove on this, and he's assured that these changes will be part of the new parking and rules regulations that will be rolling out soon to the Boston City Council. So I'm looking forward to having a conversation on this, and that's also on the new rules and parking regulations that will be before us soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this a refile?
No, this is not.
Counselor Mejia, would you like to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you. Docket, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Pepe, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, please have the chair. Docket number 0134 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0135?
Docket number 0135, Counselors Weber and Pepe offered the following: Ordinance to Protect Workers from Heat-Related Illnesses and Injuries in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile. I'd like to add Counselor Santana as the third sponsor.
Counselor Weber sees the suspension of the rules, add Counselor Santana as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Santana, so added. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
We held a hearing on this topic last year before filing an ordinance, so we're refiling this today in hopes of having a working session soon and finalizing the language before putting it up for a vote and hopefully protecting our workers from the heat next summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors, this is, it's a refile, so we're moving. Counselor, Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandes Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Orrell, please add the chair. Docket number 013, docket number 0135 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Point of order?
We're not allowed to speak on refiles?
I'm trying, I would like to move this meeting along. We have a number-
I would too, but I would like to use this time that we have as a body, the city council, to come together, and it's usually the only time all of us are in the same space. I never, or even if I did, it's okay. I don't speak on issues that aren't important, and I don't speak long just to take up space at a specific question.
Yeah, pursuant to Rule 39, it says that the proper place for debate and discussion on a matter-
To not debate.
-is at hearings and working sessions. I'm trying to move this meeting along. If you feel the need to speak on this matter, you may. But I could not even co-sponsors, preferably, are speaking on matters.
I can file a hearing order on the rules to speak about the rules, but I would like to just stand to speak with the cold weather recently to the original sponsors, if we could include cold-related also. I think it's important that if we're protecting our workers with heat, it would be also important, some hearing for many workers, many city workers who work outside, obviously our labor, many workers work outside, so please, through the chair, to the original sponsor, if we could do the wording to include all types of weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fernandes Anderson?
Just point of clarification, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, through the chair, through the Madam President, if you can clarify Rule 30, just so that I know on record. Read it today, but is it that folks can't, counselors cannot speak at all, or is it just a limitation of two to three minutes?
It's based on Rule 39.
39.
Yep.
Thank you. The matter on refiles is based on the email that Michelle sent out to move the meeting along. Usually, refiles, say this is a refile, and we move on, and we can have a hearing on it because there's been discussion last. That's why it's, we're limiting it to the lead sponsor. Yes.
Choice or a rule?
It's a choice.
Well, we can't change rules, but I'm asking what the rule is, if that's okay.
Rule 39 states that an original sponsor on a matter has three minutes to speak, and any other counselor has two minutes. We are, a lot of these are refiles, which means last term, there was already discussion on them, and so pursuant to discussion that I had with the clerk's office and with central staff to move the meeting along, as was done in previous terms, limiting the reintroduction for refiles to one minute, 30 seconds to one minute, so that we can move the matter along. If there is someone who would like to, does not want to observe that and feels like they need to speak on a refile, I will allow them to speak on a refile. My preference, and the preference of the city council, central staff, and of the clerk's office, is that we move along with a matter that is a refile, which means it's been introduced in prior terms, so that we can move the meeting along, because there are folks who, you know, are going to just say that this is a refile, and so that we can continue. But if someone would like to speak on a matter that is a refile, and you turn on your light despite the desires of my office and of central staff and of the clerk's office to limit it to lead sponsors, I will acknowledge you. The chair, Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Afternoon, I guess. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Counselor Anderson's question, because I think it's really important for us to understand dynamics. So just so that I'm clear, is this something that we're going to have to now be readjusted to in terms of how we're going to be censored and limited, in terms of our ability to utilize the space to be expressed? And are we going to pick and choose what items get airtime and not? Because I believe we need consistency, and I believe that oftentimes in this chamber, there's a different power dynamics, and if we're going to instill a new dynamic and a new rule, is this just because we're going to get through this session, or is this going to be a new rule or a new dynamic that you're introducing that we haven't discussed here as a body? Because I'm a process person, and I'd like to know what I'm engaging in so that I can show up in the best way to support you and your vision.
Thank you. So in prior iteration of the council, they've made use of timers, the clerk and the clerk's office. We have not been doing so. We are trying to introduce that generally, and we'll see how it goes, whether the timer works, if it's the first meeting that we've used it, and also the first meetings of the year, the first meeting, this meeting, the meeting next week, there will be a lot of refiles. Now, there is no rule that is governing speaking time on refiles, but refiles means that we have, as a body, at some point, have spoken on the issue, and maybe there'll be a hearing or a working session at which more discussion can be had. Because refiles are not new matters, there's no time, there's no restriction, what we are asking for, and what Michelle, our director of central staff, and with the clerk's office, we are asking that we limit it to 30 seconds to one minute on refiles, which means these are matters that have been discussed last term. Now, it may be new for this iteration of the body to really implement and put into effect Rule 39, which states when a new matter is introduced, that it's limited to three minutes for the lead sponsor and two minutes for every other counselor. We will see how it goes, because this is the first time that I, as council president, am using, we are trying to actually bring life to Rule 39. But if you speak to the clerk's office, if you speak to those who are on central staff, there have been prior iterations of the council that have put into effect Rule 39 by the clerk's office, and specifically, the assistant clerk keeping time. It's something that the clerk has done before at prior meetings, it's something that Maureen Feeney did, the former clerk did, in prior sessions, and so to move the meeting along, because pursuant to the rule, the proper place for debate is at hearings and working sessions, we are going to see how it goes. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. And I think I heard what you said is that it is a preference of central staff. Could you clarify, is it a preference, or is it just one way Rule 39 can be interpreted?
What do you, preference-
You said it was a preference of central staff that we follow this time rule. So I'm asking, is it a preference of our staff that works with all of us, that they would like us to follow this, or is it just one way, when you spoke with them, they said you could interpret the rule?
So I want to clarify, this is not for refiles. Rule 39 is for new matters that are introduced, and a timer is one way. I believe in prior iterations, there wasn't like the timer that was visible to everyone. There was like a timer that the clerk kept himself in order to maintain time, or the assistant clerk, and so using the timer is one way to give life to Rule 39.
I understand, but I'm asking, because it seems as though what I heard you say is that central staff does think that it's a good idea.
And I believe it's a good idea. At the clerk's office, we discuss this, so.
I do just want to put on the record, though, we only have 32 meetings a year that we're here in this body. Thirty-two, that means there's 20 weeks, five months out of the year, we are not here as a body on our Wednesday meeting. I don't know what the rush is. I agree, rule is time, we don't want people talking too long. I also agree, we have to get to a better attendance at the council hearings. I do my best and try to get to almost all of them. I think I do a pretty good job making sure that I don't use this space as a time just to talk and not then show up to a hearing. That's a different issue, though. So I do just want to make it clear that 32 times out of a whole year, we're not here that often. Five whole months out of the year, the city council is not meeting on a Wednesday. So to rush through this day, I think, takes away from the importance, and if people want to engage and talk and then carry it over to a hearing, you- to engage and talk and then carry it over to a hearing, you as the President, the Chair of the meeting, can obviously stop conversations if it seems like the conversation is going more to what should be happening in the hearing, but then I have the same concern Councilor Mejia said, are only certain people going to be able to talk longer or some people are gonna be allowed to share more opinions that should be conversations that happen at the hearing, so.
Thank you, Council Murphy. As this is our first time using the clock, we will see how it goes and we will continue to have, uh, meetings and hearings. The Chair recognizes Council-
The Council stopped, it said, you weren't allowed me to speak, so I want to know if that part is also going to be-
I, I clarified, this is just for refiles. The refiles, that we had a conversation about, how do we make sure, we have more, we have, I don't know, is it close to a hundred dockets that are on this, and so it's just for refiles, limiting that to the lead sponsor, so that we could try to move this meeting along, that's all of this. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia and then Council Flynn.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to thank my colleagues, because, you know, at the end of the day, our job is to utilize our platform and our microphone to, to speak. And so the last thing I want is to come to this chamber and then have to fight just to be heard, because I will fight against that. Um, but I think that in the spirit of what I'm, and just to translate for what I believe is happening here, and so that we can understand what the President is trying to do, is this particular day, we do have a lot of, um, things that are gonna be refiled. So if I'm hearing her correctly, this is an exercise so that we can move things along, not in the intentional way of trying to mute us. If we believe that we are being muted in the future, then we will utilize our platform and our microphones to stop that, but I think that today is just because of this.
Today, just because of this, in terms of the refiles, we will be moving forward with the usage of the clock for Rule 39 when new matters are introduced, to limit that to three minutes.
And, and I appreciate that, but what I will say too, is that I've been in this chamber, you're my third President, and this is the first time that I'm gonna have to adjust to this particular environment, and I will, because I'm here to do my job, but what I won't be doing, right, is not utilizing my time to speak. And there are some people who take a little bit longer and I think that we need to honor that and we should not get into the habit of censoring anyone at any moment, especially in this moment in time. And so while I appreciate the rules, I think that as a body, we need to understand the accommodations that we need to make in this chamber to ensure that nobody feels like they can't utilize their platform to speak up and against anything that does not feel right to this body. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. I will state that, we've, the buzzer went off and I did not stop anyone, it's not a blunt tool, but it is, will hopefully be used as a reminder. This is the first meeting and we've spent twenty-five minutes talking about it, at least. This is the first meeting, we were using it, let us see how it goes as a body. It is not a censorship tool, it's in the rules for a reason, right? I was talking to someone today that, uh, if you look at the City Council calendar holds, there was a time when City Council meetings were from twelve to two, that's still the hold on the calendar. And, you know, I talked to past councilors, I talked to past council presidents and I get ideas from everyone and that is, you know, we are trying to move the meetings along and we'll see how it goes. If it's working, if it's not working, I am open, I am open to any conversation. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn and then we are going to return to this, uh, to the order.
I do have a point of question.
Okay. Council Flynn, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for calling on me. Especially today, I, I do, would, I would like to hear from all of my colleagues on all of these issues. Um, I think they have great ideas and it makes a better body when we hear everyone's opinion or everyone's voice, whether that's thirty seconds or a minute or two minutes. I like to hear from my at-large councilors, um, I like to hear from district councilors, they have good, good ideas. I, I don't want to be rushed today just because it's our first meeting that we have to end this at a certain time, two o'clock or three o'clock. I think residents expect us to do our due diligence and to take this job seriously and debate the issues. Let me also remind everyone, we just got a pay raise and that took effect, um, this week. So let's do our due diligence and, um, study these issues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fernand Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So I, just to clarify, because I think it's a little bit confusing when we're all like, uh, adding in and back and forth, so for the folks at home, Rule 39 basically states that you have, when something is introduced for the first time, you have two to three minutes to express, um, to present. It does not preclude other folks that are not co-sponsors from speaking. Everyone can and can be allowed to speak on it as long as it's two to three minutes. The other thing is, it's not that you are not able to speak on, and then there's something separate, today, for example, folks, uh, my colleagues, um, decided to refile a whole lot, just all for this meeting. The unfortunate thing is that it's about two inches thick and so to get through it, the councillor, um, President is saying that she is asking for us to, um, surmise and rush through, not rush through it, but to be concise and then allowing only the lead sponsor to speak on it. That is the, uh, Council President's preference and she is saying that the Clerk's Office and the administrations, administrative staff is also in agreement. Um, that is not a rule, that is something that is a preference. However, um, I would have liked to see a meeting, some sort of courtesy conversation prior to this meeting, so that this conversation does not take place in public. Um, we are professionals and can have this conversation and so the professional courtesy, I think, would have been, let's talk about this, what do you think? Or, hey, listen, this is what I'm thinking, is that okay with you? But putting it on the floor, I think, takes people off guard. And then the other part is that, um, Rule 39 also specifies that when you are in, in debate, meaning that something is up for action, you are taking a vote on something, then you are allowed up to ten minutes to discuss each councillor, yes. And so we should make a distinction there, um, and again, just for folks watching, because it's sort of convoluted at this point, on what the rule is. This is not a rule in terms of only the lead sponsor speaking, it is not a rule for only the lead sponsor to speak on a refile. Rather, it is a preference and a smart one, because we should be concise and there are refiles. However, for folks that are not engaged civically last year, if you missed it, if you didn't see it filed, it's, it's not a thing that you're refiling for them, they're seeing it for the very first time. So also there's the question about whether or not, we would like to properly present it for folks watching at home that are only watching it for the very first time. So I would have liked an opportunity to discuss this so that we can come to some sort of consensus on it, um, because there are different points here to be made. And I appreciate my colleagues for saying, you know, hey, we have a voice and we should express it, especially because we have, this is part of the job. However, um, being concise is also part of the job in navigating everything else that we have to do. So I can understand both sides, I just want us to move past it and make it clear for my constituents watching and those who are here today. Um, I appreciate the time, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0136?
Docket number 0136, Councilors Coletta Zapata and Mejia offer the following: Ordinance establishing street food enterprises in the city of Boston Municipal Code by inserting Chapter 17, Section 22, permitting and regulation of non-motorized street food carts.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Worrell.
Thank you. Uh, Council Coletta Zapata, see the suspension of the rules, add Councilor Worrell as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, Councilor Worrell is so added, Councilor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
This is a refile, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Peppin, Santana, Weber, please add the chair. Docket number 0136 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0137.
Docket number 0137, Councilor Coletta Zapata offer the following: Ordinance regarding employee safety within Boston's oil terminals.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, this is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Oh, uh, there was someone, Council Flynn, would you like to speak on this matter? You may.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Council Coletta for filing this important subject. It's a critical issue, it also impacts my district as well and want to acknowledge the professional work of the longshoremen that play a critical role in Boston's ports that work in and around these, this infrastructure, many of them live in East Boston and Charleston and South Boston and Dorchester as well. Want to ensure that we continue to provide a safe port throughout Boston, throughout New England as well, and that the port is strong and it has all the resources it needs to ensure that we have the most effective port and also a safe port as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0138.
Uh, that will be-
Oh, that docket will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Yep. Docket number 0138, Council Louie Zan offer the following: Ordinance codifying the office of returning citizens.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Zan, Council, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile.
Thank you. Um, docket number 0138 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Oh, would anyone like to add their names? Uh, Mr. Clerk, please add Council Coletta Zapata, please add Council Fitzgerald, Council Flynn, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Peppin, Council Santana, Council Weber, and please add the chair. Uh, thank you. Docket number 0138 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0139.
Docket number 0139, Councilors Weber and Mejia offer the following: Ordinance preventing wage theft in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Council Weber, Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to add Council Peppin as a, as a third co-sponsor.
Council Weber would like to suspend the rules, add Council Peppin as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, Council Peppin is so added, Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add coun, uh, the Chair recognizes Council Flynn, Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. On, on this docket, 0139, wage theft, a critical issue impacting the city of Boston, impacting the Commonwealth, including many immigrants being exploited for various reasons. Um, I had the opportunity to work on this issue probably for seven years with the Chinese Progressive Association and with many labor unions. Part of the solution also, I would ask the, I would ask the sponsor if we could also discuss project labor agreements, because they also provide, uh, respect for our workers to ensure that they are not manipulated, taken advantage, uh, by, uh, by their bosses. Wage theft is important and one way we can work on that is ensuring project labor agreements are also part of the solution. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Council Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, uh, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, uh, Santana, Worrell, please add the chair. Oh, and Council Fernand Anderson. Uh, docket number 0139 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0140?
Docket number 0140, Council Mejia offer the following: Ordinance establishing the office of Inspector General within the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to, uh, add Council Worrell as an original co-sponsor and as well suspend the rules and add Councilor Fernand Anderson as an original third co-sponsor.
Council Worrell is added as a second original co-sponsor, Council Mejia suspends the rules, add Council Fernand Anderson as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, she is so added, Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, I'm refiling the original ordinance to establish the office of Inspector General within the city of Boston with Council Worrell and Council Anderson. By refiling, we aim to create as many pathways and flexibility as possible to make this office a reality. We've been going back and forth, so I just want to make sure that I know how to play in the constructs that I'm in. The Inspector General's office will be a critical tool for accountability tackling fraud, waste and inefficiency in city government. This effort reflects months of collaboration with national and state experts and most importantly, the voices of constituents who demand stronger oversight. Our residents deserve a transparent and efficient responsive government and this ordinance is a step towards restoring trust in our city's institutions.
Thank you. Um, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Coletta Zapata, uh, councillor, okay, this docket, docket number 01, uh, 40 will refer to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0141?
Docket number 0141, Councilor Mejia offer the following: Resolution for a special, excuse me, petition for a special law, an act relative to the reorganization of the Boston School Committee.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam, uh, President. Uh, I have one minute to speak and education is definitely one of my biggest passions, but four years ago, nearly eighty percent of Boston voters called for an elected school committee, yet we remain the only municipality in Massachusetts without one. Today, I'm refiling this home rule petition to advance democracy in the education space. Our children's future must be shaped by those elected by the people, not appointed by, uh, power brokers here. Let's listen to the voters and prioritize trust in Boston Public Schools. I think, given all of the shenanigans that are happening, we are well positioned to, uh, create different, uh, spaces and places for people to be heard and considering all the school closures that are happening and all the other conversations that are going on in the city of Boston as it relates to our Boston Public Schools, if we had an elected school committee, we would be having a different conversation. But because it's appointed, we have to rely on, uh, hopes and thoughts and prayers to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Fernand Anderson, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, please add the chair. Docket number 0141 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0142?
Docket number 0142, Councilor Murphy offer the following: Petition for a special law, an act authorizing the city of Boston to increase its residential exemption.
The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, this home rule petition is aimed at increasing Boston's residential exemption from thirty-five to forty percent of the average assessed value of all Class One residential parcels. This proposal is not merely a technical adjustment, it is a direct response to the economic pressures our residents are facing. I know all of us have been hearing from our residents since their tax bills went out. The residential exemption has long been a cornerstone in alleviating the property tax burden for owner occupied homes, particularly benefiting our seniors, families on fixed incomes and those striving to remain in their homes amidst rising house costs. In light of the recent failure of the property tax reclassification home rule petition, which sought to shift a greater portion of the tax burden from our residents to commercial properties, many homeowners are understandably concerned about these increases that they recently got in their mail. This uncertainty underscores the urgent need to expand the residential exemption to provide additional relief to our residents. By increasing the exemption, we can offer immediate financial relief and stabilized tax bills. I understand that we voted last month to set the exemption at thirty-five, however, I feel it's imperative that we hold this hearing quickly, work together and swiftly to try to get this, um, relief to our residents as soon as possible. Thank you.
Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Council Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, uh, Mejia, this docket will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0143?
Docket number 0143, Councilor Worrell offer the following: Petition for a special law, an act relative to senior homeowner property tax exemption.
The Chair recognizes Council Worrell, Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President.
And this is not a refile, right?
This is not a refile.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'd like to add Council Murphy as an original co-sponsor.
Council Murphy is so added as an original co-sponsor.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Council Mejia as an original co-sponsor.
Council Worrell, see the suspension of the rules, add Council Mejia as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, Council Mejia is so added, Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this home rule petition is about just providing more tax relief for many of our seniors, uh, many of who've lived in, in their homes for decades, you know, we constantly hear from our seniors, they bought their home twenty, thirty years ago when it was a hundred thousand dollars, now they own a million dollar home and that means property taxes has increased substantially, but not their income. You know, they're on a fixed income, meaning that they're house-rich but cash-poor. Uh, so what we'll be doing here is making sure that we try to keep seniors in their home and keeping as much money as possible in their pockets. This petition increases the property tax exemption amount and raises the income and asset thresholds so that many seniors can qualify for relief. Currently, far too many seniors are missing out on the support, and this change will help thousands more get that relief. This is about easing the financial burden on our older residents, and this exact language that is in this home rule petition is something that has passed this body before and is currently up at the State House. What we are trying to do is now separate it and pass the senior tax relief on its own. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Worrell, for adding me to this important home rule petition. Any way we can provide financial support to our seniors, our most vulnerable residents is a priority of mine, so I'm looking forward to working with you and this body to get this passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mejia, would you like to speak on this matter? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say thank you to the council for sponsoring this, to Counsel Worrell, and also to Counselor Murphy as well. Want to recognize Counsel Worrell also for his leadership in supporting fairness for veterans as it relates to their tax bill as well, and looking forward to supporting this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Murphy?
Could we... Could I go back to 0142 and add Counselor Flynn as an original cosponsor?
We'll do that in one moment. Let me finish with docket number 0143. Okay, 0143, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, would you please add councilors Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia... I think Mejia is on the docket. Peppin, Santana, Weber, please add the chair. Docket number 0143 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. With docket number 0142, Counsel Murphy seeks to suspend the rules, add Counsel Flynn as a third original cosponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Flynn is so added. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0144?
Docket number 0144, Counselors Louie Zanoff and Mejia offer the following, petition for a special law, ranked choice voting in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Zanoff. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Counsel Worrell, can I suspend the rules to add Counselor Santana as a third original cosponsor?
Absent objection, Counsel Santana is so added. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Zanoff. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on this matter. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to add their name? The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
The filing date on this, can we add that?
Say that again, Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
The date filed, the home rule petition is missing. What date was filed on?
The... On this... Yeah, the Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Zanoff.
This is a refile. We filed it last year. The ranked choice voting home rule petition, we held a hearing on it last year. I don't know the date that we actually... I can't remember the date that we actually filed it.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Sorry, shouldn't today's date be on it, or Friday's date, or whatever? Like, shouldn't the file date be at the end of the home rule petition, of the document?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So it sounds like a clerical addition. Counsel President Louie Zanoff, the floor is yours.
If there's not a date on it, it's an error, but...
Yeah, we'll get that administrated. All right. Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, for flagging that. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Oh, okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Weber, and please add the chair. Docket number 0144 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0145? The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to 0142, something rushed here, and I just want to make sure that it's clear that Counselor Worrell is the original cosponsor along with...
Counselor Flynn, because it wasn't originally said, and I just want to make sure that that's on there.
So for 0142, there are two cosponsors. So the second original cosponsor is Counsel Worrell?
Yep. It was filed just as myself, right? So he added me to his, and I want to make sure he was properly added before we move on.
Okay, I didn't get that. So Counsel Worrell is the second original cosponsor, and Mr. Clerk, and Counselor Flynn is the third original cosponsor.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0145?
Docket number 0145, Counselor Mejia offer the following, petition for a special law to establish the Commission of Inspectors General on Financial Management.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel Worrell and Counselor Anderson as original cosponsors.
Counselor Worrell is added as an original cosponsor. Counsel Mejia suspends the rules, add Counsel Fernandez Anderson as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Fernandez Anderson is so added. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
So today, I am proud to refile this petition for a special law to establish the Commission of Inspector Generals on Financial Management. This effort reflects our commitment to addressing everything from financial oversight to the policies, practices, and procedures that shape how our city operates. I want to thank the Government Ops Chair, Counsel Coletta Zapata, for her collaboration and leadership following our last working session. This petition seeks to restructure the Boston Finance Commission, equipping it with more stronger tools for accountability and transparency, but it's also more than just finances. It's about creating a centralized space where residents can file complaints, seek accountability, and take part in decision-making processes that directly impact their lives. Too often, our residents are excluded from conversations when they are the ones that know best. In 2025, we are working to change that, whether working through this commission, an elected school committee, or more accessible systems across the board. It's time to restore trust and ensure government is fair, efficient, and responsible to the people of the state.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone else? Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Peppin, and Weber. This docket, docket number 0145, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk?
I was speaking like I only had one minute, but technically, I have three, just for the record. The only reason why I didn't really speak as much as I wanted to was because I thought I had less time, but you know what?
Counsel Mejia, you can...
I'm gonna...
Okay, all right. Thank you. Docket number 0145 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0146?
Docket number 0146, Counselors Brayden and Louie Zanoff offer the following, petition for a special law, an act requiring that broker fees in the city of Boston be paid by the party who solicits a licensed broker. Since Counselor Brayden is absent, this docket has been withdrawn.
Thank you. I want to thank... I know I'm on this docket, I want to thank Counselor Brayden for filing, Governor Healy for speaking about broker's fees and the need to end them. Docket... Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0147?
Docket number 0147, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offer the following, order for a hearing to address growing concerns over White Stadium project's cost, community input, and transparency.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know I've stood up in the last term asking for information, filing 17 asks... Asking to pause. I know that there was a press conference a couple weeks ago from the mayor with more information. On December 23rd, I did send a letter to my colleagues here and to the administration asking for a briefing to get some information. I don't think the most effective way for us on this body to find out important information is through listening in to a press media update. So I'm hoping... So this hearing order will replace the briefing that never did happen yet, but the White Stadium project in Franklin Park is a public asset, and it's intended to serve the Boston community. And in recent developments regarding its cost and governance have raised significant concerns among residents who I've been hearing for many months now. Michelle Wu... Mayor Wu has acknowledged that the cost of White Stadium has now doubled, with taxpayers expected to shoulder half of that, up to close to $100 million now. And we have not seen the loan order yet, but that will obviously come before us. The current 30-year agreement associated with this project effectively places a public asset under private control and potentially limiting public access and displacing our Boston Public School sports teams, which, you know, I have my whole life been advocating to make sure that they have proper equipment, proper spaces to practice, proper places to have their games. The opponents of the project have expressed significant concern about the city's willingness to commit taxpayer funds without clear limits, creating uncertainty about the final cost. And this process leading to the approval of White Stadium has been criticized for its lack of transparency. I'm hoping that this hearing and the proper people from the mayor's office will be in front of us to answer any questions. I have, my colleagues have, and I'm hoping that we have the public here to ask public questions also. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy, for adding me as a cosponsor. Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me. Over the last year, I also have heard increasing concerns from city residents, civic organizations, parks, and environmental organizations, nonprofits on the White Stadium project. There has been, in my opinion, significant pushback from the community on public process, using public land for private organization, cutting down approximately 140 trees, transportation, as well as the substantial risk involved at nearly $100 million for the city thus far. With projected construction costs to the stadium rising from $50 million to $91 million, and $100 million to $182 million for the stadium overall, when including the team's contribution, it would be wholly appropriate for the Boston City Council to hold a hearing, as Counsel Murphy mentioned, to discuss the cost increases and the risk for the city, as well as serious concerns brought forward by residents regarding a lack of community process, transparency, the use of private land for private organizations, privatization. The newly signed 30-year lease has effectively placed a private-public venture on public land, despite White Stadium being fully funded by the George White Fund, a fund to be used for a public utility. On account of these reasons, I called for the project to be canceled, in favor of a White Stadium project geared toward student athletes in residence instead. At the same time, while we welcome a professional women's soccer team to Boston, that's important, I also call for the city and the soccer team to instead explore options such as Nickerson Field at Boston University due to existing infrastructure in place and accessibility, especially access to the Green Line, MBTA, restaurants. In the final analysis, we have spent the better part of a year exploring a property tax shift, debating our finances. Residents are now asking how we can have the money to spend nearly $100 million to help a professional soccer team instead of a project aimed solely at Boston students, student athletes, and residents, while using other sites across the city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Murphy for filing this. I guess, you know, if things feel rushed, then can we slow it down? And if we can't slow it down, why not? That's the question. And then, with the increase in the budget, and I should probably start from the beginning. I have supported this project. I think it's a good project, and considering the intentions that have been expressed by the administration and by the developers. However, there are serious concerns that the community has expressed, and the majority... And I'm speaking on it because it is in my district. It is in District 7. And although District 6 and District 4 has taken an interest because they are budding districts and have held meetings, several meetings with constituents to have more community participation or feedback, and I do appreciate the partnership there, there are concerns around transportation and parking impacts. And so, the community asked for a comprehensive transportation plan, a comprehensive environmental impact study. That did not take place. The transportation piece took place, however, it didn't address all of the parking concerns. I live in the area, and I can see folks coming in and parking all through the side streets. Would you walk from Humboldt Ave to Franklin Park as opposed to parking all the way somewhere else remotely and taking some sort of shuttle? Or would you use an app? And how long would that take in order for it to be effective? So these concerns came up, and I wasn't very satisfied. The constituents were not satisfied with this parking arrangement either, considering that, again, it didn't cover the broader area in JP and Roxbury. And so, but addressing only Grove Hall and the surrounding areas or back of the Hill. So then, the other issue is the cutting of 100 trees, obviously environmental impact, and then, you know, there's a case in court about it. So folks are like, wait a minute, we're asking you to come... To step back and slow it down a little bit so that we can have an actual discussion and feel heard. I do think that the administration has done a good job in terms of, like, holding several meetings, but if folks are adamantly, and the majority of the constituents in District 7 are saying, no, we don't feel heard, then obviously, it just means that we do have to slow down. And again, if you can't slow it down, why not? If you've increased it, where did you get the money? Can you give us the explanation of how, you know, you change your mind about increasing a budget without community input? Like, how does that happen in the middle of a fiscal year? And then, I think that there's a way to come to a middle ground. I don't think it's a bad project. I think there are ways of mitigating harm here, and the conversation could be had in a hearing. Hopefully, this hearing does not get, like, sort of ignored or postponed in any way, and hopefully, we can invite community to come in and have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to thank my colleagues for their advocacy. Two things. One, I think it's really important for us to understand that this is not the first time the chamber... Well, maybe it might be for you all, but for those folks who were here the last go-around when they were trying to have the town field, was it, Counsel Flynn? I think there was a push to use public, private... Public land for private use, and there was a lot of conversation. Then, City Council Wu was in opposition of it, I believe. And I just think it's important for us to be consistent in terms of how we show up and who we decide to support and what that looks like. So I just want to be mindful that when it comes to these conversations, that's why consistency is so important, and that we don't reserve the right to pick and choose how we want to show up. We got to be consistent, and we have to be transparent. I am going to ask, and I'm not sure where this is going to land, but when we assign this hearing order, and if I'm reading it correctly, I believe that this hearing order should land in my committee because we're talking about transparency and we're talking about accountability. I don't know where you're going to place it, but I'm standing here just to let you all know that if it goes into my committee, I am making a commitment to host a hearing in expedited fashion. And if it doesn't go into my committee, I do have a hearing order that I filed that also speaks on White Stadium, which goes to the point that Counselor Anderson has been making around community not feeling heard. And that particular hearing order is going to address how people get heard, if at all, here in this chamber, and in regards to anything that deals with development. So my hope is, is that this particular hearing, if it lands in my committee, you have my commitment, and if it doesn't, then we have another try coming down the pipeline.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Please add Counselors Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Docket number 0147 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0148?
Docket number 0148, Counsel Worrell offer the following, order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools fiscal year '26 budget.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel Weber as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Weber is added as a second original cosponsor. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
And I also like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Worrell suspends the rules, add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Mejia is so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. As Chair of Ways and Means Committee, I wanted to start this process earlier than usual to ensure that we have ample time to review and advocate for our students' priorities in the FY '26 Boston Public School budget. Last budget cycle, we held a hearing early in the process and allowed for more meaningful input before the school committee made their final decisions. This budget cycle, we have already held a hearing on the 2025, 2026 school budget. The superintendent will be presenting the proposed budget in early February, and I want to make sure that the council is fully prepared to engage at every stage. Our plan includes holding a committee meeting in February, a working session in early March, and multiple hearings in April to keep the process transparent and responsive. I'm especially encouraged that BPS is committed to producing a budget book which provides the kind of transparency that both the council and the public need to track how every dollar is being spent. The council plays a crucial role as a direct line of advocacy between our constituents and the BPS budget. By starting earlier and maintaining open line of communication and a collaborative approach, we can help ensure the FY '26 budget reflects the priorities and the needs of Boston students and families. I'm looking forward to a process that will produce meaningful outcomes for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. Counsel Weber, would you like to speak on this docket? Okay. Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would you like to speak on this docket?
Actually, no. I was trying to get your attention for the previous docket. I was trying to get your attention for the previous docket. I believe you said it got placed in education?
Yes.
I need a point of clarification.
Okay. We will return to that docket, but right now, we are on docket number 0148. Would you, you're an original cosponsor. Would you like to speak on this docket? Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fanae Anderson, Flynn, Pepe, Santana. Please add the Chair. Docket number 0148 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Okay. Counsel Mejia, you had a point of clarification?
Yeah. It would just help me better understand the dynamics. I believe that you placed the White Stadium conversation in the education.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, just for my edification, if you could just help educate me and help me understand how an issue like this, that is talking about planning and development and also transparency, ends up in education, just so that we can understand your thought process.
Thank you. So, the lease is one that is between
BPS.
Between BPS and predominantly about student-athletes, and therefore, that's why I placed it in education. Like you stated, there are actually a number of committees that perhaps it could have been placed in. It could have been placed in planning, development, and transportation. It could have been placed in other committees. I, as a president, made the decision to place it in the Committee on Education because of the lease and the players at the table.
And I appreciate your leadership, and I just think that it's really important, especially in this particular year that we're entering, that we start modeling a different type of behavior here in this chamber, that in regards to things that people have been screaming about, that we hold ourselves accountable to holding hearings on such. Because what happens is that this is also another tool that minimizes our power to be able to do our jobs. And so, while I do appreciate and respect your leadership, I also just want to call out that there have been many hearing orders that have been filed, and that they have just died in committee. And so, I want us to understand, and I want us to make a commitment that if things don't get placed in different, in the committees where we believe they belong, because this is about government accountability and transparency, and you're opting not to put it there, then there needs to be some sort of standard or some sort of assurance that we can have from you as our president and also our colleagues, that we're going to actually hear and create space for communities to come in and speak on issues that they care about. Otherwise, we're just being lame ducks and sitting here on this council, acting like we're doing our jobs, and we're really not.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Happy to have, we do all the time, we hold, I convene, we do a meeting, I think next week we have a non-BP day. Happy to do that. Happy to make sure that we work with the Chair, to make sure that there's a hearing that happens. But yes, I think all of our jobs is transparency and accountability. It's embedded in each one of our committees, and so, I think that that is part of each committee's work. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I respect that you, I don't agree, but I respect that you put it in the Education Committee. I do want to go back to what I mentioned, and I did, this was sent to you also, so asking you, as the Chair of this meeting, to help facilitate a briefing that I did ask for, given the magnitude and long-term implications of this project, it is essential that the Boston City Council is provided with comprehensive information and an opportunity for dialogue with your administration. And I did say while I filed a hearing order, but saying that that may take a while and if it's focused on education, I'm in full support of our student-athletes having access and knowing that someone has to hold the lease, but the questions have nothing to do with the education. And most times, unfortunately, not from any will or want from the Chair of Education. I know that he's been disappointed also that when we've had hearings in the Education Committee, which most of my hearings have been filed and placed into, they do not send who we ask, and they do not send the right people, and they do not give answers why. So, we're left with a hearing that has to either be rescheduled, cut short, or we end the meeting without having the tools we need to help them support the residents, and that's the reason why we hold hearings, is we're bringing up issues that our constituents want answers and support on. So, I am asking you, please, to help facilitate that we, on the body, separate from the hearing that has now been placed into the Education Committee, that we have a briefing on the important, I mean, I can read, like we all can, the long press release that went out to the media, but I think it's important that we have an opportunity to ask specific questions and get answers.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. I'm glad for us, I'm happy for us to hold a briefing. I believe that, I believe that your email was sent, on the briefing request was sent the two days or a few days right before Christmas. And so, now there's a hearing order. Happy to have the hearing and to work with Counselor Santana to make sure that there's a hearing, happy to make sure that there's a hearing and a briefing for our colleagues, happy to make sure that we're doing all sorts of hearings on this matter. Counsel Murphy, would you have a follow-up?
And I did state in the letter that I, that I did file a hearing, but knowing that that could take a while to schedule, so asking that the briefing happened sooner than later. And with $100 million, that lease, that we're on the hook for, I think we should be having lots of meetings and hearings. I don't think anything is too much, especially if after each time, we still have questions, or if when residents and constituents are calling with concerns and we don't have the tools and answers to give them, I think that makes our body weak, and that's something that has happened this past year, and I'm hoping in the new year that we get answers to questions.
Thank you. Again, happy to hold briefings, happy to hold hearings, happy to work with the Chair to make sure that we are doing both. I think part of it was the holiday season, but again, happy to hold hearings as a, make sure that the hearings happen, happy to make sure that we're holding briefings. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just want to highlight what Counsel Mejia mentioned. I think it's important, in the interest of transparency and in time, that maybe, maybe to consider moving it from the Education Committee to another committee, to the Transparency Committee. And let me just highlight the brief reason why. The Chair of the Education Committee and the Public Safety Committee, I believe there's maybe about eight or 10 hearings, that hearing orders that already went into that particular committee, committees. And I know that there's been zero so far that have been placed into Counsel Mejia's committee. Maybe, maybe in the interest of fairness and the interest of moving this work along, maybe it's appropriate for Counselor Mejia to chair this important hearing and ensure that it's done correctly and timely. Nothing, nothing against the Chair of the Education Committee, because I know he'll also do a great job, but just in the interest of time, because there's probably 10 or 15 hearing orders already in there, maybe it's more appropriate to place it in Counsel Mejia's committee, and that's my, that's respectfully my recommendation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. I respectfully hear your recommendation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0149?
Docket number 0149, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public School plans to protect students during heat emergencies.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel Weber as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Weber is added as an original cosponsor. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Worrell, suspend the rules, add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Mejia is so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
This is a refile. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fanae Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana. Please add the Chair. Docket number 0149 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0150?
Docket number 0150, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to review the distribution of Boston's 225 new liquor licenses and provide ongoing support to restaurateurs.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel President Louie Jen as an original cosponsor.
I'm so added.
I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Worrell, suspend the rules, add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Mejia is so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
This is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Pepe, Counsel Santana. This docket, docket number 01, oh, oh, please add Counsel Weber. Apologies, I didn't see. This docket, docket number 0150, will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0151?
Docket number 0151, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore scholarships for Boston students to increase access to all forms of higher education.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
This is a refile. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fanae Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the Chair. Docket number 0151 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0152.
Docket number 0152, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding barriers to business.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
This is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fanae Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0152, correct? 0152, will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0153?
Docket number 0153, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore the summer community plan.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel President Louie Jen as an original cosponsor.
I'm so added.
And I know Counsel Brayden wanted to be added, but she's not here, so I cannot add her, but this is also a refile. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. This docket, docket number 0153, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0154?
Docket number 0154, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to bring NBA All-Star Weekend and the MLB All-Star Game to Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel Durkin as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Durkin is so added.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel President Louie Jen as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Worrell, suspend the rules, add Counsel President Louie Jen as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, I'm so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
This is also a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Flynn, Pepe, Murphy, Fitzgerald, Weber, and I said Santana already? Okay, add Santana. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0157?
0157.
Oh, apologies. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0155?
Docket number 0155, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to create indoor playgrounds in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
This is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, would you please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Durkin, Murphy, Pepe, Santana. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0155, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0156?
Docket number 0156, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of cultural districts in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
I know Counsel Brayden was to be added as a cosponsor, but she's not here, so I'd like to add Counsel President Louie Jen as a cosponsor.
I'm so added as a cosponsor.
And just to give a little bit of background, but our office has met with the Mass Cultural Council, and we know that they'll be working on the new application, a new process for cultural districts in March, so we're looking forward to having that conversation with them and this body as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fanae Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana. This docket, docket number 0156, will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0157?
Docket number 0157, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding providing technical assistance to civic associations and outlining best practices for civic associations.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel President Louie Jen as an original cosponsor.
I'm so added.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Coletta Zapata as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Worrell, suspend the rules, add Counsel Coletta Zapata as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Coletta Zapata is so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
And this is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, this, and Durkin, and Mejia. This docket, docket number 01, 0157, oh, and Flynn. This docket, docket number 0157, will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0158?
Docket number 0158, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to address problem properties in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the, you have the floor.
Counsel Brayden, thank you, Madam President, but Counsel Brayden acts to be original cosponsor, however, she's not here, but this is also a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors, oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On problem properties, this is an issue I've held hearings on for about seven years. It's an important quality-of-life issue in my district. And just to give a little bit of background to people watching back home, if you have an issue with a house next to you or an apartment next to you, maybe it's relating to people partying all night when you have a family trying to get your kids to school, or a senior trying to get some sleep, and the noise level is so high, or that other quality-of-life issues impact your neighborhood. Maybe it's the improper way people are taking out trash, or maybe it's also relating to so many people staying at a particular house, such as an Airbnb, using it for various reasons. But these quality-of-life issues are critical, and it's important that we stay on top of them, especially district-city counselors. That's really the important part of our job. It's the neighborhood services, quality-of-life issues, and nuts and bolts of city government. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to add Counsel President Louie Jen as an original cosponsor.
I'm so added.
Yep, and then I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Pepe as a third original cosponsor.
Counsel Worrell, suspend the rules, add Counsel Pen as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Pen is so added. Just want to, I know Counsel Brayden wanted to be on this, and one of the reasons why she wanted to be on this is she passed successfully a home rule petition, and I was a cosponsor on it last year, about increasing the SCAW laws for absentee landlords, which I think is going to get to the problem properties, and also today, it's also her birthday, and she's not here, but wanted to uplift the work on Counsel Brayden, and that's probably why she wanted to be a cosponsor on this docket. Okay. So, we, have we added names to this docket yet?
No.
Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. This docket, docket number 0158, will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0159?
Docket number 0159, Counsel Worrell offered the following: Order for a hearing to review and establish a business owner 101 program for grant recipients.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counsel Mejia as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Mejia is so added.
Thank you. This is a refile, but I'd just like to give a little update. Our office has met with Director, a small business director at Prisena, and there's a pilot program going on with the business, Business Owner 101. So, we just want to make sure that the public and my colleagues are up to date with the new pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Zepata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the Chair. Docket number 0159 will be referred to Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0160?
Docket number 0160, Councilor Orell offer the following. Order for a hearing on a proposal for a Christmas Attic statue.
The Chair recognizes Council Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Council Flynn as an original cosponsor.
Council Flynn is so added.
This is a refile, but just also want to give an update on this. We have been in constant conversation with the Friends of Christmas Attics. So shout out to them and also the administration. We have narrowed down the sites to a few possible locations. So we are excited about the progress, and we're looking to have more information hopefully sometime this year. I'd also like to suspend the rules and add Council Mahia as a third original cosponsor.
Council Orell, since you suspend the rules, add Council Mahia as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections. Council Mahia is so added. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Zepata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Santana, Weber. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0160, will be referred to Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0161?
Docket number 0161, Councilors Durkin and Santana offer the following. Order for a hearing to explore amending the Boston zoning code to remove parking minimum requirements for new developments.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Is it possible for me to suspend the rules and add Council Liz Brayden as a third cosponsor?
No.
She's not here.
Okay, got it. Okay.
If she were, if she were second, she would, she would remain on it. But to add a third who's not listed, it's, we can't do that.
Got it. Thank you so much. Today, I'm here introducing a hearing order to amend the Boston zoning code to eliminate parking minimum requirements for new residential developments in our city. This measure is a crucial step in advancing Boston's housing and sustainability goals. Boston is at a crossroads. We face severe housing crisis with soaring costs making it difficult for residents to find affordable places to live. Our zoning codes parking minimum requirements exacerbate this crisis by mandating the inclusion of off-street parking spaces in new residential developments. A requirement that drives up construction costs, limits housing supply, and disproportionately affects the feasibility of creating affordable units. By eliminating these outdated and burdensome requirements, we can unlock significant opportunity by creating more housing, reducing costs, and making sure homeownership and renting are more accessible to Boston residents. Over three years ago, my predecessor, Kenzie Bach, took significant steps by eliminating parking minimums for affordable housing developments. That decision recognized a fundamental truth. Mandatory parking requirements increase housing costs and limit our ability to create the homes our city desperately needs. Today, I'm proposing we examine extending the same logic to all-new residential developments across Boston. Moreover, this step aligns with Boston's commitment to sustainability and climate resilience. Parking minimums encourage car dependency, contribute to increased traffic congestion, and greenhouse gas emissions. By removing these requirements, we are promoting a more sustainable transportation system, including walking, biking, and public transit, and help move Boston closer to achieving the goals outlined in our Climate Action Plan. Let me be direct about why this hearing is so important. Every parking space we require by statute adds significant cost to housing production, costs that are ultimately passed on to residents through higher rents and purchase prices. I want to acknowledge this fact. As the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I'm in constant conversation with developers, small and large, across our city. In many discussions, I repeatedly hear from everyone in our development community that off-street parking is the number-one cost driving and interfering with penciling out residential development. If we are serious about bending the cost curve down on housing, removing statutory parking minimums for new residential developments is a mathematical reality. However, these requirements aren't just about money, they're about space. In a city as dense as Boston, every square foot dedicated to mandatory parking is square footage that could be used for additional housing units, green space, or other community benefits. My hearing order will open up a conversation that Boston desperately needs to have. How do we allocate scarce public space and resources to make our built environment one that works for all Bostonians? My position is clear. Let's make, let the market decide. Let's respond to the actual parking demand rather than arbitrary minimums. This is about prioritizing homes for people over space for cars and creating a Boston that is affordable, sustainable, and livable for all. Some may worry about neighborhood parking impacts. But let's be clear, removing parking minimums does not mean that no parking will be built. It simply means that developers can build the amount of parking that makes sense for each specific location and project. Developments near transit hubs might choose to build less parking, while those with fewer transit options might include more. Flexibility and being dynamic are precisely what this moment and issue calls for. This hearing would allow us to examine how parking minimums impact our broader city goals. We have ambitious targets for climate action, housing production, and affordability. Every time we require the construction of parking spaces that might not be needed, we make it harder to achieve these goals. We make housing more expensive, and we miss opportunities to create sustainable transit-oriented development our city needs. The success of our parking minimum elimination for affordable housing projects has given us valuable data and experience. We've seen that developments can still secure financing, residents can find homes more easily, and neighborhoods function even better without mandatory parking minimums. Now is the time to consider expanding this common sense approach to all residential development. I want to emphasize that this hearing order is about starting a conversation. It's about gathering data, hearing from experts and residents, and thoughtfully examining how we can modernize our zoning code to serve Boston's future. As our city grows, our policies must evolve with it. I look forward to a robust discussion in the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee about this proposal. And I encourage all stakeholders, residents, developers, transportation experts, and environmental advocates to participate in this important conversation. And I want to, I just want to thank my cosponsor, Henry Santana, for standing with me in this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Santana, and then I'll go around the horseshoe that way. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to thank Council Durkin for including me in this and for your leadership on this topic. I do want to reemphasize a couple of points, I mean, that Council Durkin mentioned. And that is that this hearing is about exploring a policy that could lower housing costs, that could really increase housing supply and support sustainable development. The clarification that Council Durkin mentioned was that this does not remove parking minimums and doesn't mean that we're going to eliminate parking, but otherwise really focus on where parking is needed and help reduce some costs. We've seen cities like Cambridge and Somerville adopt this policy. And then recently, we've also heard from an Austin delegation that they use this tool to really help solve some of their housing crisis down there in Austin. And we were just able to hear from them a few weeks ago. And just to reemphasize, this is going to be a conversation, a hearing to bring different stakeholders together and see what makes sense here in Boston. Again, I just really want to thank the lead sponsor, Council Durkin, and I look forward to participating in this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank the sponsors for bringing this. I just want to bring an extra voice into this chamber is that I spoke with some folks from the West End recently. I believe it's in your district. And some of them are low-income, they happen to live in subsidized housing, and expressed some concerns about the fact that they can't even afford to even live there because of the parking situation. And while I have been in support of this in the past, I think it's really important for us to be mindful of the unintended consequences that we're putting on people who live in subsidized housing, where there's no parking available or you have to pay $500 just to be able to park your car there, and your rent is $300. Make that make sense. So I think as we're talking about these conversations around parking minimums, this, that, or the other, I think that there's another layer that we might potentially add is also making it affordable for, if we are going to build in the parking or not, that it should be affordable and accessible to folks who are in subsidized housing. Because otherwise, I can't live in the West End. It is a false hope for those folks who have been complaining about the fact that they can't live there because they can't afford to park around there. So I think that needs to be part of the hearing order is how do we make it? If there is, if we're going to remove it, if there will be buildings and projects that are built with parking or no parking or whatever, that it needs to be income-adjusted for those folks who are low-income. Just wanted to add that for consideration.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this issue impacts my district in Chinatown. Residents want more parking. They're asking me, Council Flynn, we need a car to get to our doctor's appointment, to take our children to sports events. We need to take the automobile to take our kids to various after-school events, to visit parents. A car is necessary for working-class families, in my opinion. And let me also add that people in my community in South Boston and Chinatown, in the South End, actually throughout my district, at times they're driving around the neighborhood looking for a parking spot when they come home from work. Sometimes 40 minutes, sometimes 50 minutes. What impact will this have on those families that need a car to get to their office? Maybe they don't work in downtown Boston. Maybe they work in somewhere around 495 or outside of the city. They need a car to get to work, to come home. They need a car to get to the supermarket. Including, many of our seniors need an automobile in working-class families. I also talk to real estate and developers too, and they are saying just the opposite. They want more parking in the city. That helps them financially, but they also need, we need to continue to keep working-class families here. Boston, sure, it's a young city, and younger people don't necessarily need the car as much as families with children. But when you do have children, like many of us do here, when you do have children, you have an obligation and you need a car to take them to various places. It's not, it's not a luxury. Families need a car to get to places, and let's not penalize working-class families. And my final point, Madam Chair, I don't want to be like Somerville and Cambridge. I don't, I don't think it's necessary for us to follow their lead. They should be following our lead here in Boston. And our lead should be about leadership. And it's not necessary for us to eliminate parking that impacts working-class families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just in regards to parking requirement minimums. I am, I am not for it because at the moment, while I understand the deregulation of parking and saying, "Let's just make sure we do the amount of parking that is needed and let the market decide." The market is actually not deciding how many parking spaces is. It's the planning department that's deciding. And I think most of us can attest to the fact that many projects in our neighborhoods, typically when it's up in the planning department, the projects in our neighborhood say, "If you do less parking, we'll approve your project." And so all that does is allow more people to come in. We cannot control whether or not they bring cars, but it is controlling whether or not we have the space to hold those cars, where then they park in front of other families' houses, and the family with kids that have the groceries and needs to go somewhere have to park down the block now. And they say, "I'm going to get out of here because I can't stand living in the city anymore." And it continues to flush of families out of our city. So while I understand the deregulation part, I just don't think the people we think are dictating the amount of parking is what we actually, is what is actually dictating the amount of parking. And we have to think about the unintended consequences, but I'll save this for the actual hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fitzgerald. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Like my colleagues, the ones who have spoken previously, I'm not for it either. In my district, there's been probably the most amount of construction and development out of all districts. And if you're on the ground with constituents, as I've been, and you've gone to these meetings and you go through and you've been monitoring like all of these projects, what we did in the district is that we wanted to be community-led. So my district, the constituents in my district formulated, you know, a community process where they then got to a board, and they came up with this idea of creating the Boston District 7 Community Fund. And they alone did that separate from the counselor because the counselor should not have any say in mitigating community benefits. That's one way, one thing. What exists already is Roxbury Strategic Master Plan, which essentially has a master plan for Roxbury. So when something like this comes in, and there's already the RNC, the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, that is supposed to be abided according to zoning protections for Roxbury, then I'm not sure how this will contradict what they are already working on. And so I think that, you know, we have to look into specific neighborhoods that have protection. I don't want to call it protection zoning, but for lack of better terms, master plans already in place, agreements with the city of Boston that this is how planning and development will take place. The other thing too is that Boston, I know that our planning department has put together sort of like this master plan vision or study, if you will, of like spatial mapping coming, which Roxbury, which District 7 and my office have already done in terms of amenities and stuff like that. But if you don't do a comprehensive study to understand how one construction in one place impacts the other, same for parking. And then I think that it's a little bit short-sighted, not on your part, but previously, even for the city, for us to say who needs parking in terms of, you know, in terms of their income. When you talk about the poorer you are, the more you need a car. It's the opposite. The poorer you are, the more you have, the more you have kids, the more you have needs, the more you have sicknesses. So Roxbury in particularly died 23 years sooner than Back Bay. So when you're looking at it from that perspective, I got to get to my job, I got to pick up my kid, and I got to, and I got to pick up my kid after, and I got to go to my mom, my grandma, whomever that's sick. Or I got to help my friend, and that is what we do in communities of color, is that we help each other out, we drive around, we make it, we make do out of nothing. So I think it's sad for us to even say, like, if you have like an IDP unit, then you don't need parking. And I've seen, I've seen developers do that. And I've been part of the conversations where community is saying, "No, the poorer they are, then we want them to have free parking." It's the opposite. So studies show that this, this would be a detriment to communities, disenfranchised communities. I'm very interested in the conversation. I think that everything is a conversation. So I think that when we get to this part, it's actually allowing community voice. But I would heat us on making decisions for community when we are saying that we're propagating or we are at least portraying ourselves to be a city that is supposed to be making decisions based on community feedback or community-led decisions, especially when it comes to our planning and development. And if we're not doing that, then, you know, what are we doing here? So I look forward to the conversation. I'm wholeheartedly in disagreement. I think that construction or developers are incentivized when they don't have to do parking. They will go for it. You know, "I don't have to do parking. I'm not doing parking." And that is, that has been the trend. BPDA or other agencies will say, as Council Fitzgerald mentioned, "If you don't do parking here, we will give you the permit faster." Developers will come to the meetings and tell constituents this. "The reason why we're not offering parking, I'm under pressure. The city's telling me not to offer parking." So there's all of this like sort of back and forth and miscommunication or misrepresentation of what's going on. And then we come with the law and we say, "By the way, you don't have to do parking. It doesn't matter if you're poor and you need a car." We're already displacing people with Blue Hill Ave Master Plan, the middle lane. People are asking for a side lane, and we're doing a middle lane, even though it's going to displace our small businesses because we're reducing parking by 40%. We're already displacing black people by doing these constructions and overwhelmingly not including amenities and doing these constructions in our neighborhoods where we're displacing black people and bringing in gentrifiers, whether black or white, bringing in the gentrifiers that can afford it. So if you can afford it, if you have money, you can have quality of life. If you're poor, you can die 23 years sooner.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess my better judgment, I'm standing up and talking about this because I am of two minds on it. I just want to commend you, Council Durkin, because this is not an easy topic. It's an age-old topic, right? What comes first, the cars or the people, the people or the cars? I think for me, as Chair of Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, I am in general supportive of any policy that reduces cars because therefore reduces carbon emissions, right? And that's a goal of all of ours for 2050 net neutrality. On the flip side though, I do think this is well-intentioned. I do look forward to the conversation that is based in data and facts. I do want to call out the fact that Plan Easty and Plan Charleston has already established parking regulations. And so I would hate for this to supersede the very real and difficult work that took two years to do. We've gotten granular to the point of various blocks within squares and going out to commercial or mixed-use and then going out to residential. So I just want to make sure that I call out that and look to that as potentially guidance for this conversation. But just commend you again for putting this forward. It's going to be an interesting conversation, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I want to thank you, the sponsors, Council Durkin and Santana. As you can see from the conversation amongst our colleagues already, it will be a vibrant hearing, and it will be one where there are a lot of opinions expressed. This is obviously, as an at-large city counselor, see all the time the number of different opinions expressed around parking. We know the trade-offs around a parking spot and housing someone. And believing that housing is a human right, that's something that should be prioritized. But there are also real things to consider regarding gentrification and how quickly and rapidly neighborhoods change. So I'm just looking forward to the conversation because I do think it's a really important one. It's a really difficult one, as Council Coletta Zapata just stated, but it's not one that we should shy away from because we have a number of priorities here as a city that we have to meet. So would anyone else like to speak on this matter, or would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Pepe, Weber. Please add the Chair. Docket number 0161, we refer to Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0162?
Docket number 0162, Councilor Murphy offer the following. Order for a hearing regarding the use of nondisclosure confidentiality and any other types of employment agreements.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I filed this hearing order as an emergency late file at our last meeting on December 11th. It was blocked, so I did file it right after that meeting to make sure that there was no one who would stop the conversation here. So I filed this because I do believe it's critical for us as representatives of the people of Boston to reaffirm our commitment to transparency, accountability, and trust in government. Nondisclosure agreements, often referred to as NDAs or confidentiality clauses in other similar contracts, are not inherently bad. In private industry, they often serve legitimate purposes, such as protecting sensitive proprietary information. However, their use in municipal government must be carefully scrutinized. Our responsibility as public servants is to maintain the public's trust and to uphold the values of an open and equitable government. Public scrutiny, both locally and nationally, has raised concerns about the potential misuse of NDAs to shield misconduct, suppress legitimate grievances, or limit transparency. While such agreements are not commonly used in municipal government, their existence, especially when poorly understood or inadequately disclosed... especially when poorly understood or inadequately disclosed, can foster suspicion or erode confidence in the integrity of our work. This hearing order is about ensuring that our policies align with the principles of good governance. We owe it to our residents and employees to examine the use and purpose of these agreements, to assess whether they are being applied responsibly, and to explore reforms to protect the rights of individuals while maintaining the public trust. I do want to state that, I had a conversation with Counselor Weber because I did see that he filed a hearing, an order that will be coming up later. We did speak about working together. He had put some specific wording into it, but looking forward to having this, I assume, being placed in the Rules Committee and that us both working on getting language together and coming to some sort of agreement on the council.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank Counselor Murphy for filing this. I was asked by the Boston Globe last month about my feelings about nondisclosure agreements on this body and, you know, I said I was against them. I don't think they're good public policy. You know, I, I think that, you know, they're not enforceable under the State Whistleblower Act, you know, to the extent someone's disclosing unlawful activity. And there is a history on other, other bodies of them being used to keep people from coming forward with exposing sexual harassment. I think we should follow states like New York and California and our own state senate and, you know, show the public that we are in favor of transparency and are, are looking to empower our own staffs. I did propose specific language in its docket number 190. I don't know if those matters can be combined. I'll leave it up to the discretion of the, of Madam President. But yes, I did speak with Counselor Murphy and looking forward to working on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also agree with Counselor Murphy and Counselor Weber. I don't support NDAs or confidential agreements in the city council or in the city administration throughout city departments. I'd like to know if we, if there are many of them that have been enforced or taken place over the, over the last five or 10 years or so. I think it's important for the public to know about it. I know the state auditor is also reviewing this issue up at the State House, I believe. Madam Chair, may I ask a question to Counselor Murphy?
Through the Chair, you may.
Counselor Murphy, would your hearing order be focused on the city council or would it be focused throughout the city, citywide departments?
Through the Chair. Counselor Murphy, if you'd like to speak, I can turn on your light and you can speak. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. So, in the Rules Committee, we can only, in that committee, I would assume that we're talking specifically about our rules that we, but I do believe that it's an important conversation to then maybe have a follow-up hearing order because I do think it's important to find out if other city departments or agencies are working under these nondisclosure agreements and what we should be doing as a council or at least having the knowledge of it. But I think that's something we should talk through because the Rules Committee would be addressing the rules of this body, not the rules of the, so I think we'd have to have a follow-up hearing order, maybe in the Government Ops or others to change the charter if we do find out that there's nondisclosure agreements happening and we're unaware of them. But thank you for that question.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Kalata Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Peppin, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket number 0162 will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0163?
Docket number 0163, Counselor Murphy offered the following order for a hearing to discuss enhanced public safety measures during large events in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add Counselor Flynn.
Counselor Flynn is so added. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Peppin as a third original co-sponsor.
Counselor Murphy, seek to suspend the rules, add Counselor Peppin as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor, Counselor Peppin is so added. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
I would like to wish Counselor Braden a happy birthday, but I did just want to go on record to say that she also wanted to be part of this and there's many hearing orders. So, she will be working closely with us, but I did want to add Counselor Peppin. So, this hearing order is, the City of Boston is home to, well, first actually, let me step back. I think it's important that we maybe take a moment to uplift the lives of the 14 lost in New Orleans last week in that horrible terrorist attack. Like many things, it's events that happen here in the city or happen across the country, across the world, that bring me to filing hearing orders or wanting change here on the city. So, it was that incident that got me thinking and talking to first responders about First Night and other events. We know that the city hosts many large events. And the City of Boston, you know, including parades, festivals, we've expanded our open street and we attract significant number of residents. The marathon is one of the biggest, you know, gatherings across the country. And obviously, when we win championships, we are, have many visitors and residents in the same space. The safety and security of attendees at these events is of paramount importance to the City of Boston. Recent incidents, such as the tragedy in New Orleans where a truck drove into a crowd, underscore the critical need to explore additional measures to protect large gatherings from potential threats. The use of physical barriers, including strategically placing vehicles like trash trucks and plows and not just police cars, which we know unfortunately can be pushed through if someone has that intention, has been identified as an effective method to deter and prevent vehicular threats in crowded areas. The Boston Regional Intelligence Center, BRIC, collaborates closely with local, state, and federal agencies to enhance situational awareness and provide accountability and actionable intelligence that supports law enforcement and public safety officials in maintaining peace and security during large public events. Proactively implementing enhanced safety measures informed by BRIC's intelligence and expertise could strengthen the city's preparedness for large-scale events and improve public safety outcomes. Speaking with police officers, our EMS, and other first responders, our fire, and the Transportation Department, we do have plans in place. But unfortunately, in this time that we're living in, if someone has an intent to hurt, they can. And it isn't consistent and it's if a police captain or others who have the power to make a decision, that they would use cars. I know someone reached out from our municipal police here in the building and said like when they had events for First Night down, out on City Hall Plaza, they had placed cars. But it's not something that happens all the time. It's not written into some expectations when planning for large events. So, I do think we, the conversation will be important. We'll have the appropriate departments here to talk about what they're already doing and how we on the council can support making sure that large events, that the public feels safe and that people aren't deterred from enjoying these wonderful events that we host across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn, were you the second co-sponsor? Okay, the Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Murphy for bringing this forward. I also think it's important, as Counselor Murphy mentioned, to hear the voice and, and opinion as well from the Boston Fire Department, the Boston Police Department, our emergency management team as well. The BRIC plays a critical role. The city council also was smart enough to accept the funding from the federal government on $12 million for anti-terrorism initiatives that, that just not only supports Boston, but greater Boston cities and towns as well. What happens in Boston has an impact in, in Chelsea or Somerville or Brantree or Quincy. It's about working together, hearing from our first responders, our law enforcement professionals, but also acknowledging that when we have major events in the city, that we are going to rely heavily on our Boston police. It's going to cost the residents, it's going to cost the city money for overtime. The more events we have, which will continue having major events here in the city, it's going to cost money. We should all, we should acknowledge that during the budget process, that it's critical that we fund the Boston police with the right resources so they can effectively do their job, protect the residents, protect the city, especially during these large, large events that are happening almost weekly here across the city and across greater Boston as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Murphy for bringing this topic to the table. The reason why I stand here in support of this hearing order is because unfortunately last year during the Dominican Festival, there was an unfortunate situation where, you know, some people got hurt and it was not part of the festival. It was the next-door gathering that was happening. And after speaking with police officers, it is something that could have been prevented. So, I want to make sure that public safety conversations are part of the special events permitting process as well to ensure that our cultural events are safe so that organizations like the, like the people that organize the Dominican Festival are not looked upon negatively because of something that happened when it was actually a beautiful event for the community. So, that's why I'm standing here in support of this and want to be part of the conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add, to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Kalata Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0163, we refer to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0164?
Docket number 0164, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for a hearing to discuss 2024 crime statistics.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Worrell as an original co-sponsor on this docket?
Counselor Worrell is so added. You have the floor, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm filing this hearing order today to discuss last year's crime trends with our community, community in neighborhoods, including city officials, law enforcement professionals, advocacy groups, schools, residents. Crime trends offer us valuable insight into what's happening in our neighborhoods. They are important and they decide public safety strategies, community policing. This year, Boston has had the lowest homicide rate in a long period of time. We recognize the hard-working men and women at the Boston Police Department for their dedication to keep our city safe, as well as our medical professionals as well. However, there's still work to be done. According to the 2024 year-end crime stats report released by the Boston Police, Part One crime overall increased, including firearm-related arrests stayed at the same, at about 436 arrests, and there were about 105 gun-fire incidents this year, on par with 107 incidents last year. But there were notable increases in Part One crime as well, especially in the categories of domestic and non-domestic assault, up significantly, commercial burglary up significantly, larceny. Domestic violence is impacting almost every neighborhood in this city. It's also impacting, it's also a crime that does not get reported, like many other crimes. We need to do more on domestic violence. It is my hope that this hearing will help our communities understand the types of crime occurring in their neighborhoods, which can help inform and guide our neighbors, families, our police, our seniors, on their approach to prevent, report, and improve public safety and quality of life for all. I also continue to focus on District Two public safety challenges. A lot of drug activity taking place throughout District Two, including in my neighborhood in Andrews Square, in Chinatown area, on Tremont Street, across the street from the Boston Common, on, on Boston Common. We have a lot of public safety challenges. Actually, crime went up in many of those particular areas. Residents want more public safety, more police officers there. It's our job to work together to provide the necessary resources to get police in all these neighborhoods so residents can feel safe and be safe in our, in our cities and in our towns across greater Boston. But right here in Boston, we need to work to ensure that this city is safe, including the downtown area where we welcome so many tourists, businesses, workers. It's, it's critical that we invest the right resources here in downtown Boston. We need to do better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Flynn, for adding me as a original co-sponsor. I think this hearing is a great practice for us to continue to build stronger relationships and communication with public safety and community engagement. I think this is, should be a hearing that the city council holds annually with the public just to talk about crime stats and, with the public and also for the police department so we could dive into the data, see what new strategies are being implemented where we are having maybe uptick in larceny or uptick in any other crimes in any of these precincts. My office advocated for walking beats in C-11 and I'm glad to see that the advocacy has come to life with a new community interaction team that's already on the ground, meeting businesses and establishing relationships and working partnerships with our community and addressing quality of life issues in our, in, in a majority of our business districts. So, I'm looking forward to this conversation and the continued work between all of my colleagues in the Boston Police Department and the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As the council representing some of the areas where a lot of the increase in this crime has happened, I just want to stand up and speak. And a lot of it actually borders with Counselor Worrell's as well, around Meeting House Hill, Bowdoin, Geneva, Mass and Cass, and the issues that occur around there. So, just to emphasize that not all places are feeling the decrease in the crime and so I look forward to reviewing these statistics as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Flynn and Counselor Worrell for bringing this forward. As an at-large city counselor, I've gone to some of the comstat meetings where the police from different districts have meetings to share out to the community the data that we would be getting from this hearing order. But I do think it's important that we have a citywide, have them come together. And I agree, Counselor Worrell, that an annual check-in would be important because one of the things that I learned at the last comstat with C-6 was that although murders were down, thefts, but also internet phone and text scamming was way up in that district. And then, just last week, we all saw that thousands of people received text messages to pay parking fees, which was a scam. So, making sure that residents don't have a false sense of security, but at the same time, making sure we have the data to support our first responders, making sure that we're doing everything we can to keep our residents safe. And that means many different things to all of the residents across the city.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Is anyone looking, else looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please, to this docket, people looking to add their name to docket number 0164. Mr. Clerk, please add counselors, Mahia, Murphy, please add the Chair, oh, Fitzgerald, and please add the Chair. Docket number 0164 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Point of order.
Oh, sorry. All right, let's do this again. If you'd like to add your name to this docket, docket number 0164, Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Fitzgerald, Mahia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Docket number 0164 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0165?
Docket number 0165, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for a hearing to discuss the process of establishing hero squares in the City of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Hero squares are about recognizing the supreme sacrifice of men and women in the U.S. military that, that made the supreme sacrifice for our nation in the U.S. armed forces. Every neighborhood has many of them. You could notice, notice the signs above the street signs with the person's name and in a, in a, in a gold star usually. That signifies that that family and that, that veteran made the supreme sacrifice to our country. District councils, I see them at so many of these events, respecting the heroic service of our veterans and military families, but also recognizing those veterans that made the supreme sacrifice. I also want to acknowledge the role of the City of Boston Veteran Services Department under the Chair of Rob Santiago. He's done an exceptional job representing the city, but also representing veterans and military families. It's about respect and dignity for our veterans and I'm looking forward to this discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Kalata Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket number 0165 will be referred to the Committee on, just want to make sure. Will be referred to the Committee on Veterans, Military Families, and Military Affairs. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0166?
Docket number 0166, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for a hearing to discuss services for women veterans.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this is a refile, but I will speak briefly about how critical women veterans are for our country, for our U.S. military. But the fastest-growing demographic at the VA hospital is women veterans. Women veterans serve honorably. They serve with distinction. But unfortunately, they don't get, in my opinion, they don't get the respect and dignity that they've earned. And what I'm asking for is us to have a hearing like we had prior and to have a discussion about the role women veterans play in our city, in our country, but also working with the Veterans Administration to ensure that there's gender-specific services for women veterans at the Veterans Administration. You can, people can say, "Well, Ed, that's really a federal, a federal responsibility." And it is a federal responsibility, and it's a state responsibility, it's a city responsibility. It's also a moral responsibility to ensure that women veterans are treated fairly. And they have unique challenges that might be different than men, male veterans, including having a higher concentration of being a single, a single parent and raising children. They also need housing. They also need, as I mentioned, medical care. They also need an opportunity to get back into the workforce because they've contributed so much to our nation, and they're dealing with many challenges. And it's about working together, respecting them, and ensuring women veterans are always welcomed here. And I want to make one final point. I think we need more housing in the city of Boston for veterans and for women veterans as well. That should be a top priority of the City Council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Colletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket number 0166 will be referred to the Committee on Veterans, Military Families, and Military Affairs. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0167?
Docket number 0167, Council Flynn offered the following order for a hearing to discuss resources for the Boston Police Crime Laboratory.
The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is a refile. I've had several hearings on this in the past. I've been to this Boston Police Crime Lab many times, talked to the Boston Police Commissioner many times. But let me, let me be direct. Last year at a hearing with my colleagues, we discussed the challenges at the Boston Crime Lab, including delays in testing of sexual assault kits. The City of Boston is not meeting the state requirement of testing within 60 days. Unacceptable. But through the leadership of this body, we were able to ensure that they meet that state requirement. It's not an option, it's a requirement. During last year's budget cycle, we voted to reallocate $1 million within the Boston Police Department to support the work of the Boston Police Crime Lab, which included $700,000 from BPD Personnel Services to the Crime Lab to increase the hiring of lab techs and to fill the director vacancy. $300,000 for BPD equipment to the Crime Lab to purchase new sexual assault testing equipment to update faster DNA testing, such as Y-screening, which this mass state police use and the New York City police use. I want to recognize Councilor Coletta for her work on, we see a lot of young women and men, really, in the city. Their drinks are being spiked and they're being assaulted. We can't have these sexual assault kits sitting around in a corner not being tested. We need to test them right away, ensure that these sexual assault kits are tested, but also the results are given immediately to the appropriate officials, including the District Attorney's Office. This hearing would be a follow-up, as I mentioned, on last year's discussion. I hope to have the Director of the Crime Lab here to talk about what's happening at the Crime Lab. I do understand that the Boston Police Crime Lab was without a Director for almost a period of two years. Unacceptable. I'm not sure right now if that person is back on the job in the directorate position. But we need to ensure that the personnel in the Crime Lab are doing their job effectively, they have the resources and their tools to do their job, and that we get Y-screening. We need to have the best Crime Lab in the country, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you, Council Flynn, for bringing this forward again. I do just want to say, I was at the public safety hearing, that the Director of the Crime Lab was there, and it was very concerning that when you spoke about the $1 million that we, this body, voted and passed as an amendment and was specifically targeted for resources in the Crime Lab, that he has never received that money and was wondering where it was. So I do hope from this conversation, but a bigger conversation and meeting should be that before we go into this new budget cycle, that we address and look back at our previous amendments to make sure that the amendments that we did pass, that they actually were implemented and that the money that we believe we were able to support different departments across the city, that they did receive that money and how effective was that? Because knowing that $1 million could have gone somewhere else, and we on this body passed and the mayor did not veto that amendment to go directly to the Crime Lab, has never gotten there yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Colletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Docket number 0167 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0168?
Docket number 0168, Council Fernando Anderson offered the following order for a hearing to discuss a holistic vision for District 7 in order to redress historical racial harm and to uphold District 7 constituents' civil rights.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fernando Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As much as I'd like to heed to your advice about speeding through and just saying this is a refile, I think that for my district specifically, with lack of access or digital access or any type of civic engagement, it is important that, because it's a new year, new file, that I repeat it every single time, that I'm patient with my constituents so that they are fully engaged and I'm fair to them. So I will present this as if I'm filing it for the very first time, and this year would be the very first time. And so the District 7, obviously, you know, I've talked about, you know, different planning and development, need for a comprehensive study to understand impacts, a need for a study to understand how parking is impacting quality of life in District 7. And I, I then list, and I should begin with saying that I list, you know, public health inequities, housing instability, educational disparities, economic inequities, transportation and access, environmental justice. So what I did then is I went ahead and used resources in District 7, university partners, Northeastern University, Northeastern University, Harvard, MIT, UMass, and BU to do the different phases of this project. So we started with an asset mapping, understanding the gaps of the inequities or the inequities in District 7. Then we moved on to trying to figure out exactly what was, what is today, and so what is the need for the future in terms of amenities, but creating walkable streets in District 7, better transportation, and so forth. So then I created what's called the District 7 Action Plan with seven different domains to include housing, economic development, public health, civic engagement, and all of the categories that I've already listed. And so within each category, then we worked with Northeastern, and this semester they're going to be putting together metrics of policies that would address each domain. So for example, within each housing, within housing, they would say, "The city so far has only addressed 10%." That's, again, by example, hypothetically, 10% of housing need in District 7, and you have this much to go, and Councilor Anderson, you've only addressed maybe about, in addition, 10%. So this, we have this much more to go. And then providing an actual assessment, a financial assessment or analysis of what it would take, investments in budget as well as policy, as well as projects to address the housing needs. And that's within each domain of the District 7 Action Plan that I created, along, of course, with my amazing office team. And so with community partners, we have a roundtable, as you know, in District 7, the District 7 Advisory Council, shout out to District 7 Advisory Council members who are here today. We, I then took their advice on historically, context, and as well as today, how to move forward on these projects. We went to MIT and asked for spatial mapping projects. So we'll actually be able to provide a full, comprehensive recommendation to the administration, hopefully by summer 2025, of what this, what the recommendations are to address the District 7 Action Plan. And so redressing these racial harms would take time. It would take these studies, it would take partnerships with resources that my office does not have, that the administration does have. And I've heard a lot of support from BPDA and Mayor's Office of Housing, shout out to Economic Chief Idowu, Chief Dillon, and others, of course, in BPDA, who have been working with my office to, in partnership, and as well as Transportation Department for Roxbury Resiliency Corridors, and looking at how we can revitalize corridors, build housing, create affordable commercial spaces while we are addressing the parking needs, while we are addressing transportation needs and environmental needs of the district. This would give us a holistic spatial map recommendation to the city that would say where amenities should go so that we can create this holistic housing ecosystems in Roxbury, South End, and Grove Hall. And so with these hearings, you will notice that we divided it up, I divided it up into seven parts, just like the domains in the action plan, so that we can hold hearings within each and hopefully hear from the administration, what have you done so far? And we've done that by doing State of Roxbury, State of South End, State of Fenway, and Grove Hall. But we want to do that through a hearing so we can properly document where they are, bring that back to the university students so that they can build these metrics and do this dashboard with recommendations, and then come back to the city and say, "Here is what planning should look like. This is what the district has asked for, and this is what they need, and this is how you would hopefully redress historic harms to build a better District 7 for all." Thank you very much, and I apologize. I'd like to add Counselor Mejia as an original co-sponsor, Madam President. Thank you.
Counselor Mejia is added as an original co-sponsor. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Colletta Zapata, please add Counselor Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights, Racial Equity, and Immigrant Advancement. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0169?
Docket number 1, 0169, Councilor Colletta Zapata and Fitzgerald offered the following order for a hearing regarding the implementation and funding of coastal resilience strategies and the establishment of a climate bank.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Colletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I am going to not take the full minute, but just express my gratitude for the, the work that has been done on behalf of the administration, on behalf of my co-sponsor, on behalf of this body, to get the Office of Climate Resilience up and running. This is my maiden speech, this is my, my top issue, and from my maiden speech, we were able to, to have the establishment of this office actually take place through a restructuring of the Cabinet. And so I just want to express gratitude to Chief Sweat, who is our new Chief Resilience Officer, and of course, to my brother in service, my friend in service, Chris Osgood, who I meet with monthly on issues related to the waterfront. I also took the time to go to Dorchester to walk the shoreline with the, with my co-sponsor, and so I just want to say thank you for that as well. It's been great learning about all of the various issues that all neighborhoods are, are dealing with as it relates to coastal resiliency. And so, of course, the work continues, and so we have restructured this filing to include the Climate Bank because now we are moving from assessment to implementation. And again, it's going to be about $4 billion to truly fortify our coastline, so looking forward to the work ahead, and just thank you to everybody who's gotten us here to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, the Chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to applaud Councilor Colletta Zapata for her leadership on this and really taking a hold of what, I'm in lockstep with her in the fact that that is the, this is the challenge of our times, seven-plus miles of coastline, border District 3, and that is not including the islands as well. And so the, not only the, the planning and preparation, implementation, and financing of all this is something that needs to be sped up as well so we can start to implement it. But again, thank you to the co-sponsor, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Durkin, Fernando Anderson, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, Flynn, please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0169, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice for Resiliency and Parks. I want to pause. Mr. Clerk, there was a docket, docket number 0166, the one on women veterans. Did I ask folks to, did I ask my colleagues to add their name on that docket? I did? Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Okay. Thank you. We are now on to docket number 0170. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0170?
Docket number 0170, Councilors Colletta Zapata and Mejia offer the following order for a hearing to discuss food access, sustainability, and the need for a food hub in East Boston.
The Chair recognizes Council Colletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add you as the third co-sponsor.
Council Colletta Zapata seeks to suspend the rules, add Council President Louis Shen as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. I'm so added. Council Colletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. This is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. This docket, docket number 0170, will be referred to Committee on City Services and Innovation, Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0171?
Docket number 0171, Councilors Colletta Zapata and Louis Shen offered the following order for a hearing to establish a climate change and environmental justice curriculum pilot program in Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Colletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Council Santana as the third co-sponsor.
Council Colletta Zapata seeks to suspend the rules, add Council Santana as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Council Santana is so added. Council Colletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I apologize to Council Worrell and Council Fitzgerald, who also reached out, but this is a refile, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. That was docket number 0171? Correct. Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Fernando Anderson, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, Mejia. This docket, docket number 0171, will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0172?
Docket number 0172, Councilor Mejia offered the following order for a hearing to address critical issues in jail-based voting and empower incarcerated communities to strengthen democracy.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Councilor President Louis Shen as an original co-sponsor, and I also would like to suspend the rules and add Council Anderson as an original third co-sponsor.
Okay, I'm so added as second sponsor. Council Mejia seeks to suspend the rules and add Council Fernando Anderson as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Council Fernando Anderson is so added. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
This is a refile. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. This docket will be, and Durkin. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights, Immigrant Advancement, and Racial Equity. Yes, okay. Civil Rights, Racial Equity, and Immigrant Advancement. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0173?
Docket number 0173, Councilor Mejia offered the following order for a hearing to audit the distribution of local, state, and federal grants to small businesses.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a refile.
Thank you, Council Mejia. This docket, docket number 0173, will be referred to the Committee on Post-Audit Government Accountability. Oh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Councilors Durkin, Fernando Anderson, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Post-Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0175?
Docket number 0174.
Oh, sorry, 0174.
Councilor Mejia offered the following order for a hearing to audit government transparency and accountability towards surveillance equipment.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. You have the floor.
This is a refile, Madam President.
Thank you. This docket, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Durkin, Councilors Weber, Santana, Worrell, please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0174, will be referred to Committee on Post-Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0175?
Docket number 0175, Councilor Mejia offered the following order for a hearing to audit the city of Boston's procurement processes, procedures, and progress.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Procurement shapes how we invest in Boston's future, yet too often our systems lack fairness and equity. Today, I filed this re, this refile to audit the city's procurement processes, protocols, and procedures, and the progress. This is a step towards ensuring that opportunities are accessible to all and that city contracts reflect our commitment to equity and inclusion.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Would anyone else like to add their name? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Murphy, Pepe, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0175, will be referred to the Committee on Post Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0176?
Docket number 0176. Counselor Mejia offer the following order for a hearing on government accountability, transparency, and accessibility of decision-making protocols in city government.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and this is a refile, but I saved all my time so that I can have a little bit more time for this one in particular. I'd like to make a motion to substitute the language, and you all should have a copy of this language on your desk. It was just a few additions that some of my colleagues had recommended that I add to the hearing order, so just wanted to make sure that everybody has a copy. And I also would like to add Counselor Worrell and Counselor Anderson as original co-sponsors.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to substitute. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Substitution is allowed. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
And I also would like to add Counselor Worrell and Counselor Anderson as co-sponsors.
Counselor Worrell is added as the second original co-sponsor. Counselor Mejia seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Fernandez Anderson as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Fernandez Anderson is so added. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you. So today, I'd like to refile this hearing order on government accountability, transparency, and accessibility in decision-making protocols in Boston. From White Stadium to the Housing Accelerator Funds, to the redesign of Blue Hill Ave, to the modernization of Article 80, the BPDA Squares and Streets and Planning, and everything in between, I believe that we have an opportunity to really understand how we go about making decisions that impact the quality of life for our residents, and I think that this particular hearing order will give us an opportunity to really unpack how we get to where we are, what are the steps that we're taking, how transparent are we being, what community engagement really looks like, and how are we making decisions that really reflect the will of our constituents? So I filed this as an opportunity for us to make sure that the conversations that we're having in and out of this chamber really reflects the will of the voters. And considering that my colleagues filed a hearing order in regards to White Stadium, and I also have it here in my hearing order, I'm curious as to whether or not we are going to be able to have that discussion, so I'm hoping that that would be the case.
Thank you. No. Anyone else? Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Weber. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 01676, will be referred to the Committee on Post, oh, Pepe. Yes. Will be referred to the, did I miss anyone? Will be referred to the Committee on Post Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0177?
Docket number 0177. Counselor Mejia offer the following order for a hearing to audit the city of Boston's hiring, firing, and promotion policies, practices, and procedures.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Yes. So today, this is a refile. I also wanted to just make note that when it comes to this particular hearing order, we've had several hearings on this, and issues continue to persist. I want to just uplift one in particular, the Eddie Crispin situation that happened recently. I think that we have an opportunity really to have a real conversation of what it looks like and the decision-making processes that exist in the hiring, firing, and promotional practices across all city departments, in particular, Boston Police Department and BPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Oh, the Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and want to say thank you to Counselor Mejia for bringing this forward and for recognizing an exceptional and dedicated police officer who's done a tremendous job in this city for so many years. Madam Chair, may I ask Counselor Mejia a question about her hearing order?
To the Chair, you may.
Counselor Mejia, can you just tell us how are you going to get the information from city departments to the city council in preparation for that particular hearing?
To the Chair, Counselor Mejia, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Oh, come on. You know how hard it is to get any information here to the chamber. But I think my hope is, as we prepare for this particular hearing, is I think what would be a good practice is for us to send some questions in advance so that people don't come here surprised. So that's number one. I think that that would be a good practice and something that we can do. And I also think that it's important for us to have a balanced panel here so that we're, even if we have to subpoena the Commissioner to be here, then that's something that we need to consider doing. Does that satisfy your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This docket, docket number, oh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Weber, Worrell. This docket, docket number 0177, will be referred to the Committee on Post Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0178?
Docket number 0178. Counselor Worrell offer the following order for a hearing regarding homeownership voucher program.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I know Counselor Braden expressed interest in being added to this hearing order, but this is just a refile to review. The homeownership voucher program is something that we invested in initially through awkward dollars, that we fought for more amendments, and through the last budget cycle. But just to give everyone a little update on progress that we have made on the homeownership voucher program in collaboration with BHA. So far, 73 families have been supported with 42 purchases closed last year. While this, you know, shows meaningful progress, there's clear need to expand these numbers to help more families achieve their dream of homeownership. So this is all about making sure that we continue to make homeownership a real possibility for a lot of families, many families, especially those that are stuck. We hear that so often with the moderate-income families that they're stuck. They don't get the subsidized housing, nor can they afford. So we're just trying to make, create real pathways for more individuals to be homeowners here in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. I'm sorry. I, it's not in regards to Counselor Worrell. It's a different docket that I forgot to add. Counselor Pepe.
Okay. Can, we'll get to this, and then I'll call on you again. Okay? Would anyone else like to add their name to this docket? The Chair, Mr. Clerk, would you please add Counselors Murphy, Pepe, Mejia, Fitzgerald, Santana, Weber? Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0180, will be referred to Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk? Oh, okay. Sorry. 0178 will be referred to Committee on Housing and Community Development. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Mejia, there's an addition you would like to make. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counselor Pepe to docket 0173.
Mr. Clerk, can you please add, so Counselor Mejia seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Pepe as the third original co-sponsor on docket number 0173?
I don't have, it's the.
Oh, you don't have a, you don't have a second?
Yeah.
You don't have a second, so he's a second.
I just forgot to add him.
Okay. Okay, cool. So Counselor Pepe is so added as a second co-sponsor on docket number, docket number 0173. Okay. Great. Thank you. We are now on to docket number 0179. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0179?
Docket number 0179. Counselor Louis Chen offer the following order for a hearing to discuss efforts to cancel medical debt.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council President Louis Chen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a refile about medical debt. It's really an important conversation, and I just wanted to shout out to our federal leaders, to our President, President Biden, and Vice President Harris, who recently announced yesterday that medical debt will no longer appear on people's credit reports. We know that medical debt is a huge burden. It's the number-one debt that people have in the city of Boston, in the country, and it disproportionately affects folks who are disabled, women, black women. And so I'm just very encouraged to see movement on medical debt at the federal level, but I'm looking forward to seeing how we can continue to do work on this, on this. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Pepe, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and please add the Chair. Give me one second. Sorry. Docket number 0181, no, I read it wrong. Sorry. 0179 will refer to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0180?
Docket number 0180. Counselor Worrell offer the following order for a hearing regarding equity and city contracts.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counselor Mejia as the original co-sponsor.
Counselor Mejia is so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile just to review the progress we have made as a city on equity and city contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Can you tell me which, which hearing order we're talking about right now?
0180.
How is that different than my hearing order around the procurement? Just, it would be helpful to understand.
Which, what is your hearing order?
The one that I read into the record, 17, where is it? 0175 and 0180. How are those different? If they are not different, I, if they are different, then I understand, but if, they seem similar to me, so just curious. If there's a way for us to merge?
Well, just, I mean, I'm, just based off of what the language of the order is, one is to audit the city of Boston's procurement processes, procedures, and progress, so that seems like a, I mean, defer to the clerk, but that seems like a broad, you know, audit, and what Counselor Worrell just talked about was specifically focused on equity, but...
Yeah, but I think if you read my hearing order, right, it really looks at that. I think if you, it is ensuring that we are centering racial equity. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem, but I just think that, you know, if we're gonna, we already have limited time, and we're lucky to even have hearings. If we're gonna have something, then I think we should just be more thoughtful and efficient. So I'm just curious if it makes more sense for me to withdraw mine and allow yours to stand. I really don't care. I just don't think that it makes sense for us to have two separate conversations. I'm talking about city contracts as well. So I'm just curious about what you think makes the most sense.
Okay. This is, so, just, this is not something that the Clerk's office flagged. It is something that we've discussed, but I do think that there are sufficient differences, again, differing to the clerk, but Counselor Worrell, if you'd like to speak, you may. There's also nothing preventing holding a hearing on both dockets. I'm not sure what committees, but...
I'm happy to work with you on this, but this is a hearing order that I filed, I believe, from the first time I, you know, I think we've both been working on this, so happy to collaborate, but I think the difference for me is, it's the audit, and here we are reviewing the equity and city contracts. And I know you have it in your language, but this is just focused specifically on equity in the city contracts.
To the Chair, one moment. To the Chair, Counselor Mejia, if you'd like to speak, you may, and then, I don't know if the Clerk has something he'd like to, because she's, what, one sec. She's talking about docket number 0175, and before us, we are on 0180, for which she was added as original co-sponsor as well. Okay. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia, if you'd like to...
I just would like to not be difficult. In the spirit of collaboration, I don't mind. I just think that these are the sort of things that we need to start, like communicating more efficiently, maybe, you and I, or maybe the Chair of this body, when things like this come up, maybe creating a space for counselors to discuss prior to these meetings so that we understand where we're at and why we ended up here, because otherwise, then we spend a lot of time trying to figure these things out publicly. So I don't mind, I just think that it's important for me to flag that. It's a very similar hearing order that has already been filed, and so, in the spirit of just letting things go, I don't mind just being a co-sponsor alongside you, Counselor Worrell.
Thank you. And the flagging that there may be similarities, I believe this, they were refiled, these are both also refiled, which is another reason why, like, last year, they were both filed as independent dockets, and so to make the, to make the decision now so that they, one takes precedent over the other, I think would be a bit inconsistent with what happened last year, and so that's why, even if there are similarities, that maintaining them as two separate dockets makes sense, but I'll defer to the clerk if he feels differently.
Yeah, well, yeah. We did file them last year.
As separate dockets.
Flagging them this time.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you. So this docket, docket number 01, let's see, docket number 0180, unless...
Do they want to add their names?
Okay. If they want to add their names. So Counselor, Counselor Flynn, would you like to speak on this matter? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question to the clerk. Are they, are you saying, Mr. Clerk, that they're both should go forward, or should one go forward, just want to get your thought process?
Well, I have to read them, and I haven't read them, because we didn't flag them that they were the same, so...
Madam, Madam Clerk, may I make a recommendation? We take five-minute break and give the clerk an opportunity to do his due diligence?
Sure. We, we'll be in a brief recess. We'll see how long the clerk needs. I encourage my colleagues to stay in chambers because it might not take the clerk that long, and we can continue to move on with the meeting. So we are in a brief recess. We are back in session. Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to speak on the mic.
Well, we reviewed the two dockets, and they have been filed together for the last couple of years, so they've been both filed, and there are similarities, but there are distinct differences in terms of the equity aspect and the reviewing of procedures and processes. So we, they've been filed for the last two years, and there was no objection, and we didn't feel that there was a need to delete one of the dockets this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And one thing that we will do is put this docket in the committee with Councilor Mejia, where her previous, where her docket is, and then they will work together on this docket. The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. You have the floor.
Could we repeat all of that? Councilor Mejia is back. We came back from a break and not everyone knew, and she was the one who asked the question. So I do think it's important that we let her know what was just decided upon. No, it's fine. You didn't know the break was over.
Counselor, I mean, Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to repeat what you just stated, you may.
So both dockets have been filed over the last couple of years, so there were no objections at that point. This year, they were both filed again. There are similarities, but one specifically is for equity, and the other one is to review the processes and the procedures of procurement. So although they may be interrelated, I think that it wasn't really flagged this year because it was filed in the previous years.
Thank you. Councilor Peppin, did you have your, no, okay, great. So this, the point of order. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And just wanted to follow up, Mr. Clerk. So because it wasn't flagged last year, or in the last several years, that means we can go forward with it? This year with two separate, separate dockets, even though they're very similar?
Yes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
I'm gonna let, so basically, we're gonna move on.
Yep.
And I'm happy that this happens because I want us to be very mindful of this moment. Because when we have a repeat performance in regards to something else that potentially may come down the pipeline, that we already know that we already set precedence. So just for the record, everybody be put on notice.
I'd just like to explain that when I ruled 15 myself at the first meeting last year on a matter that was similar to a matter that another counselor filed, my docket had to foul by the wayside. Part of the issue with these two dockets is, prior to me being president of the council, one of these dockets were filed last term. We were talking about a multi-year filing, and it was not caught initially. And so, we're expecting these dockets as two separate dockets. You're a co-sponsor on Councilor Worrell's docket. This docket will be placed in committee. Would anyone else like to add their name? Oh, Mr. Clerk, you have the floor. I mean, not Mr. Clerk. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam, Madam Chair, so I, I, I don't necessarily agree with that in terms of, because something happened previously, then going forward, that gives it the opportunity to have both dockets heard at this session. I would, I would rather, if they're both very, very similar, to go forward with one docket just so we're able to maintain some consistency. I think, I think that's what people, I think that's what our colleagues are looking for, some consistency, whether or not we agree with the particular hearing order or not. I think consistency is the key word. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Respect your opinion. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. You have the floor. Are you good? Okay. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a point of clarification through the Chair, Mr. Clerk. I wanted to figure, I just wanted to understand moving forward, so, and I don't want to be laborless. I really do want to understand this. If something has set precedence, is it a rule that we, with all due respect, Mr. Clerk, you know, I love you. Is it a rule that we, because it, because we set precedence prior year, is it a rule that we adhere to that because of that? Or, it is a rule?
There is a rule for duplicate filings.
Right. It's Rule 15 or Rule 5 when it's similar, but whatever, yeah. So my question is then, is it a rule that if we've set precedence the prior, prior year, that we then, whether clerical error or whether oversight, that we then uphold similar practice from the prior year? Or is this here, again, we are just moving forward as courtesy? Look, we did that before, we're doing it again. Okay. Just, I just want to know, because I've never seen a rule like that. And just so that I know, so that I, say, I did, say I made this mistake as well, like I have something similar, no such precedence, I would like to use this precedence here today to say, hey, in the past, we've done this. But I don't want to continue to add precedence after precedence after precedence in the practice of that because then we're going to be changing rules on the floor. But, I get it. Just in case.
Thank you. Again, I also just want to clarify that this is, this was a unique situation. Mr. Clerk, if you would like to...
Well, in, in, in the past, and I've been here a long time, the, the filing of duplicate dockets, we, when we catch them, we don't catch them all the time, but when we do catch them, I would contact both counselors, say, you filed a similar order or a similar resolution. And whoever filed it first is that, that is the one that would go on the agenda. Now, in this case, these two dockets have been filed every single year for the last couple of years. We haven't caught that they are similar, but, you know, it's, I do read each one. I mean, I didn't read these because there were so many dockets on the, on the agenda and there's so many refiles. It's hard to go through every single one and critique each one of them unless it's brought to our attention. And we do have a mechanism that we do that now, and we try to avoid that. And we work hard to, when we prepare the agenda, to go through those motions to make sure that there aren't any duplicates. Sometimes, unfortunately, they do go through, and then we have to deal with it in terms of talking to each counselor and coming to an agreement until we draw it or have it combined.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. You have the floor.
Yeah, so, thank you. And I really want to thank Counselor Anderson for her fierce interjections here. Because I think that sometimes, what I've noticed is that there are people who have lots of information and use their knowledge and their power, and then there are people who share it and help support those folks who, who need to get access to that power and knowledge. So I just want to say thank you. That's humbling to have to admit that sometimes I don't know it all, and I'm okay with that. And I appreciate how you always quarterback for me here. But anyways, I, I wanted to just note for the record that this particular day has been really interesting in terms of how we show up in this chamber. And I love the fact that we're all getting to see who's who. So I'm gonna continue to be who I am, y'all. I'm going to just say that I am going to, I want to rise to make sure that the clerk in particular understands that I'm not withdrawing my hearing order. And that I will still have a voice in being able to fight for this particular situation. So just want to make that note. Clerk, you heard me, right?
I heard you.
Okay.
Thank you. And the only person who can withdraw a docket is the counselor, and we understand that you're not withdrawing. Would anyone else like to add their name? Miss, Mr. Clerk, could you please add counselors Murphy, Santana, Flynn, Weber? Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0180, will be referred to the Committee on Post-Audit Government Accountability, Transparency and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0181?
Docket number 0181, Councilors Louie Jen and Peppin offer the following: Order for a hearing regarding voter accessibility and election preparedness.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Councilor Worrell. This is a refile. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Murphy as a third original co-sponsor. Look forward, and you know, if we need to have additional conversations to bring in the Elections Department to make sure that we are ready for all elections, including the election this year, we'll also do it. Want to credit the Elections Department for coming forward to the hearing and being so forthright as we make sure that we have a robust and strong democracy in the City of Boston. Thank you, Councilor Worrell.
Thank you. Absent objection, Counsel Murphy is added as original, a third original co-sponsor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to Council President Louie Jen for refiling this for this year. It's a very important topic that has really impacted my district, so I'm very much looking forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and looking forward to continuing and having this docket on the agenda again. But one question, if I could, through you to the clerk?
Yes.
For clarification, something you had just said previously about if dockets are similar. When this was filed as an emergency hearing order on, I believe, November 6th, myself, Counsela Peppin and Counsel Louie Jen all filed similar hearing orders. But you had just said that if they're similar, they get combined.
They can.
They can. But I'm just making sure the verb, just to be very clear. It doesn't mean they have to be combined, because in this case, if they weren't combined, only one went forward.
Right.
Okay. Because in the case had Counsela Mejia withdrawn hers, it could, I mean, so there's, there's different options. It's not, right? So I just want to be clear to the public watching, to us on the body here, that we could ask for a combination of the three, which we could have done, but Counsel, right? So we only went forward with one persons in this case. And in the case of Counsel Worrell and Counsel Mejia, it could have been not just one was taken. And it's going to come up when Counsel Weber, something Counsel Weber and I talked about earlier, when I noticed that he filed a hearing order very similar to the nondisclosure agreement that I filed, or tried to file, and then I filed on December 11th. I uploaded it right away to make sure that it was on this agenda. So I just want to make sure that when it comes to that, that we're given the opportunity to talk about what options there are and what options we want to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counselor Santana, Counsel Weber, Counsel Mejia, and please add the Chair. Thank you. Docket number 0181 will be referred to the Committee on the whole. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0182?
Docket number 0182, Counsel Louie Jen and Weber offer the following: Order for a hearing to explore the effectiveness of high dosage tutoring and other academic recovery strategies.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Worrell. This is a refile. Look forward to having this conversation and to advocating for more of these supports for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counsel Durkin, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Mejia? And please add the Chair. Docket number 0182 will refer to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0183?
Docket number 0183, Councilors Louie Jen and Coletta Zapata offer the following: Order for a hearing regarding the City of Boston's response to sexual assault, domestic violence and related resources for survivors.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. I'd like to seek to suspend the rules to add Counsel Durkin as a third original co-sponsor.
Absent objection, Counsel Durkin is added as a third original co-sponsor.
Thank...
Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Chair, but thank you. This is a refile. Look forward to having this conversation. For the last two years, I've filed to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. This is an important conversation that so many people work on Shakira Story, Casamian, or so many people are doing this work, Asian American Task Force on, so there are so many people, and I look forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is an issue I've worked on for seven years and had held a hearing on it previously with City Councilor Andrea Campbell. Obviously, now the Mass Attorney, Attorney General. We had this hearing at Northeastern in my seven years. It's probably the best hearing that I've been involved in. I also want to add my name to this, and domestic violence is a, is a critical issue impacting every neighborhood. It's important that we work together and support survivors of domestic violence, especially women in our immigrant community. I do a lot of work with the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence, and that's a major challenge that we're having for the Asian community here in Boston. I also want to recognize my mother and her work on this issue. As First Lady, she was very involved in supporting domestic violence, survivors of domestic violence here in the City of Boston. This is a difficult issue for families across the city, including those in the LGBTQ+ community. As I mentioned, our immigrant neighbors. I have been moved by the stories of many survivors. I'm asking my colleagues again, and I'll speak about it briefly, to have a standalone domestic violence committee. It's something I've been focused on, and if there was one issue that I want to be identified with, it's domestic violence, at the right appropriate time, I would ask my colleagues if they would support that standalone committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber, and please add the Chair. Docket number 0183 will refer to the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 10, 0184?
Docket number 0184, Councilors Louie Jen and Coletta Zapata offer the following: Order for a hearing on the needs and services for recent migrant populations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to, I seek to suspend the rules to add Counsel Mejia as an original co-sponsor, third original co-sponsor.
Absent objection, Counsel Mejia is added as a third original co-sponsor. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, this is a refile. Look forward to continue working with Moya, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement, and others as we address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, may I ask a question to the, the lead sponsor?
Through the Chair. You can ask the question to the lead sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would, when we do have this hearing, would there be an opportunity for us to invite state officials and federal officials to ensure we hear directly from them on issues impacting our immigrant neighbors, migrant, migrant residents across the city? I guess my request is to ask state officials to provide an update, obviously along with city officials and federal officials as well.
Counselor, you have the floor.
I hear that request, and I, we'll, we'll talk more when we plan the hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber? Please add the Chair. Docket number 0184 will refer to the Committee on Civil Rights, Racial Equity and Immigrant Advancement.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Counsel Flynn?
Yeah, I, I didn't understand the response from Counsel Louie Jen. Could, could you repeat that for me, please?
Counsel, Counselor, you have, Counsel President Louie Jen, you have the floor.
We have a number of hearings. We're, we're gonna plan for the hearings. I take into consideration what you offered. Thank you, Counsel Flynn.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0185?
Docket number 0185, Council Louie Jen and Fernandez-Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing regarding the state of anti-displacement as to Boston's Acquisition Opportunity Program.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that Counsel Braden has done work. This will be in her committee, so she'll continue to do that work. I think the AOP is an incredible program that has grown, and we need to continue to grow the Acquisition Opportunity Program to prevent displacement. This is a refile, so I look forward to continued conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber? Please add the Chair. Docket number 0185 will refer to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0186?
Docket number 0186, Counsel Louie Jen and Worrell offer the following: Order for a hearing on a cross-sector collaborative citywide strategy for community safety and violence prevention.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile, particularly important in the absence of SOR, so thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber? Please add the Chair. Docket number 0186 will refer to the Committee on Public Safety, oh, and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Docket number 0186 will refer to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0187?
Docket number 0187, Councilors Louie Jen and Worrell offer the following: Order for a hearing on the civil rights and liberties of returning citizens and re-entry into their Boston communities.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I seek to suspend the rules and add Counsel Fernandez-Anderson as a third original co-sponsor?
Absent objection, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson is added as a third original co-sponsor. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the matter? Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the makers for bringing this forward. This is an issue I've worked on most of my adult life as a, as a probation officer, supervising returning citizens that are on probation, involved in the court system as, as a probation officer at Suffolk Superior Court. I also thank getting and communicating with those that are currently in jail or prison, ensuring they...
ensuring that they have a plan prior to their release is a critical part of it. One issue I do want to focus on is possibly having a city council hearing. I'd like to sponsor it maybe for next week to get the ball rolling, but to have a city council hearing inside the Suffolk County Jail with the permission, obviously, with Sheriff Steve Tompkins. We have held hearings there previously, and we've had returning citizens that are incarcerated testify, and it's actually an opportunity for us to listen to them and to their concerns and how we can assist them and better understand the challenges that they have, such as one of the biggest issues many men have, returning home is something simple as a birth certificate or an identification card. Without identification card or an MBTA pass to get to your parole office or a probation officer, you're not in compliance. So there's a lot of these issues that we could work on, but I think it's important for us to have a hearing eventually in Suffolk County Jail, and that's something I will file for next time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber, Counsel Fitzgerald, and please add the Chair. Docket number 0187 will refer to the Committee on Civil Rights, Racial Equity, and Immigrant Advancement. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket number 0188?
Docket number 0188, Counselors Louie Jen and Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Order for a hearing on discrimination in lending and appraisals.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber? And please add the Chair. Docket number 0188 will refer to the Committee on Civil Rights, Racial Equity, and Immigrant Advancement. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket number 0189?
Docket number 0189, Counsel Durkin offer the following: Order regarding a text amendment to the Boston zoning code regarding the Bullfinch Triangle district use regulations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to add Counsel Coletta Zapata as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Durkin, seek to suspend the rules to add Counsel Coletta Zapata as a third original cosponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Coletta Zapata is so added. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Louie Jen. Today, I am introducing a text amendment to the Boston zoning code, Article 46, Section 9, which establishes use regulations for the Bullfinch Triangle. This amendment reflects a thoughtful approach to addressing two critical challenges facing our city: our housing shortage and the need for streamlined, efficient development process. The Boston, the Bullfinch Triangle, a historic gem in Boston's West End, stands as a testament to our city's rich architectural heritage. Designed by the renowned Charles Bullfinch in the early 19th century, the district has witnessed tremendous transformation from its origins as reclaimed land from the Mill Pond through the era of elevated JFK Expressway to the revitalization following the Big Dig project. Today, we have the opportunity to write the next chapter for the Bullfinch Triangle story. This amendment proposes a straightforward but significant change, reclassifying residential uses from conditional to allowed in the Boston zoning code. While this may seem like a technical adjustment, its impact on our city's housing landscape could be substantial. Let me be clear about why this change matters. Currently, developers seeking to build housing in the Bullfinch Triangle must navigate additional regulatory hurdles because residential use is classified as conditional. This creates unnecessary delays and uncertainty in the development process, favoring people with more money who can absorb the risk and costs associated with seeking a variance. A concrete example is the current proposal at 222 Friends Street. The proposal calls for a life science and lab building. Throughout the community process, members of the community routinely asked for housing to be built. The developer agreed with the sentiment but repeatedly communicated how the need to get a variance to build housing was an impediment to the process. Actually, he cited housing as a conditional use as the value set by the city. They'd like to see something else here, not housing. If a larger developer feels constrained by the current code, imagine the burden smaller developers face when they're trying to solve our housing crisis. This amendment simplifies the process by designated residential use as an allowed use within the district, removing layers of red tape. By doing so, we send a clear message to developers and residents alike. Boston is committed to addressing our housing crisis, and Boston wants to see housing in the Bullfinch Triangle. The Bullfinch Triangle is precisely where we should be encouraging housing. It offers exceptional access to transportation, proximity to major employment centers, connection to amenities of the Rose Kennedy Greenway. By removing these regulatory barriers, we can unlock the district's potential to contribute meaningfully to addressing our city's housing needs. Importantly, this change does not compromise the historic character of the district. The Bullfinch Triangle can and should serve as an example of how we balance growth with preservation, ensuring new housing integrates seamlessly within the fabric of our community. And just a point on that, it's so important that the way that we're amending the text just allows for the current floor area ratio. So essentially, if you have an existing building or an existing zoning code, we're just saying you can build housing at this location that, like, so if there's a building that already exists, you can build housing there, and you can have housing there. As the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I'm aware of how contentious the topic of zoning can get. We had an example today with the hearing order that I filed. There are a few instances where all stakeholders are in alignment over changes. This is one example. The residents of the Bullfinch Triangle and the residents of the broader West End neighborhood are strongly in support of this amendment. The development community is in support. The planning department is in support. My amendment aligns with the broader goals of the city and the Commonwealth to create vibrant mixed-use housing that is accessible and equitable. In passing this amendment, we take a meaningful step towards alleviating housing scarcity while promoting smart growth and sustainability. I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this measure. And while we're on the topic of history, it's important to note that any Boston city councillor at any time can position the zoning commission for any amendments, but in order of transparency, we should have a hearing. So I'm not looking for a suspend and pass on this today. We're going to have a hearing, and I think that's incredibly important, and I want to thank Counsel Coletta Zapata for joining me in this. Until January of last year, this was her district, so I'm honored to be offering this in partnership with her.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Peppin, Santana, and Weber. This docket, docket number 0189, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0190?
Docket number 0190, Counsel Weber offer the following: Order to implement a nondisclosure agreement prohibition policy for Boston City Council.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. I spoke earlier about this. I'm hoping to work on this issue along with Counsel Murphy. I sort of reiterate what Counsel Murphy said, which was, you know, there's, there are some good reasons to have nondisclosure agreements, but, you know, looking at how it has played out and what other bodies have decided to do, like our own state senate, you know, I just think it's in our best interest to figure out a policy that will prevent them from being used in the future, and I filed this language that mirrors the Massachusetts senate language, and looking forward to working on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I ask a question to the maker, please?
To the Chair, you may.
Counsel Weber, on this nondisclosure agreement, is that also including confidential agreements as well? Or are you distinguishing for NDAs and not confidential agreements?
To the Chair. Counsel Weber, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Yeah, I think that there's discussion of two types of agreements. There is one with a nondisclosure agreement which is used as a precondition for a job. Another one is a settlement of a claim. Here, this rule as proposed, and we'll discuss this, I guess, just refers to the precondition, you know, nondisclosure agreements. To the extent somebody has, there's been a lawsuit and they've worked out a settlement, you know, I'm not, I just, you know, not trying to avoid those agreements. Even in states like New York, they just amended their policy to allow victims to enforce, to agree to, you know, not like confidentiality provisions. I mean, it's something we can consider. The senate, you know, opted primarily on that, you know, to limit, to ban nondisclosure agreements where there are precondition of you getting your job. So that's, that's where, hopefully I explained myself. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. Counsel Flynn, you have additional? You may.
I just want to say thank you to Counsel Weber. He did explain it and appreciate the response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Worrell. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0190, will refer to the Committee on Rules Administration. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0191?
I have a question.
Oh.
I have a question. So this is, this is an order, right? And so, following a hearing, in order for us to pass something like this, what does, just because I haven't seen this before, what is necessary for it to pass? Like, do we need to have a vote on this, or because it's specifically for council action, can the council president just implement it?
Thank you. I, since you're responding to me, I think that there are multiple, there are different ways. It could be as a policy, it could be as a rules amendment, I think, and I do think that. I don't actually know which way Counsel Weber is suggesting, but I think that maybe that could come out in a hearing, the determination. I don't know if Counsel would like to speak about, yeah. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, our office was also scrambling, trying to figure out the proper procedure for amending the rules. I think, you know, as council president, it gets to, you know, sort of have jurisdiction over our rules. I'll leave it up to her, you know, and we'll figure that out as we go along. And I think it's also a proper topic for discussion in the hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. But yeah, it could be through rules, it could be through just a policy that has happened before as well. Right, exactly. Just like the, yeah, yeah, we've done, we've done it just via policy as well. So it could be sort of, you know, a policy that as President of the council, I institute, be, you know, or we could do it through the rules. Happy to open to both, and really open to both. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0191?
That was referred to.
Oh, that, yeah, that docket, docket number 0190 was referred to the Committee on Rules Administration.
Docket number 0191, Counsel Murphy offer the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding all newly created job positions.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just want to reiterate that there's not many tools we have on this body. There's not much power we do have. We do know that our city charter has a very strong mayoral setup. That being said, the 17F is one tool we can use, and I've said this before. Unfortunately, I feel like I have had to use it more than I would want to because the lines of communication are not always as open as I think they should be between the administration and all of the councils, not just some of us. But I do just want to read the rule that under the provisions of 17F of Chapter 452 of the Acts of 1948, as amended and other applicable provisions of law, her honor the mayor be inherit by is requested to obtain and deliver to the city council within one week, seven days of the receipt here of the following information. That's true for all of the 17Fs. Many of mine don't come back as quickly, sometimes a few weeks, but this was filed originally on October 21st, 2024. That was 79 days ago, and I have been nudging and trying to get at least some of the information back. So I guess it's a new 17F. It's not a refile, but, I'm sorry, something. Sorry. When other councillors speak, I just get distracted. Sorry. So I'm asking for a list of all new positions that have been created since December 1st, 2021, and I did add in this 17F that this information can easily, I don't write easily, but it can be easily obtained by using the position number to filter all new jobs since the specified date. So I'm hoping that we do get this information. I do know that it's easy to obtain with the databases we do have, and anytime a job description is changed, if salary is changed, if a grade is changed, they get a new job number. So I'm hoping that we can get this information quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy seeks suspension and passage. Okay. Counsel Flynn, you would like to comment? Okay. Normally, it's, normally it's just the lead sponsor in 17Fs, but I will allow you to speak if you would like to speak on this matter.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, would you like to speak on this matter? You may.
Thank you, Madam President. I do think it's important, and a quick point here, and I appreciate your grace, Counsel President, I understand 17F, and you're allowing me. This is a privilege. Thank you. I do, I do understand Counsel Murphy's point. I think that, you know, it's high time for us to be able to, like, support people, even if we don't agree with your policies. I disagree with some of your policies, probably most of your policies. Who cares? Like, that's democracy, right? And here we are. So, but when it's, when it's right, it's right. When it's wrong, it's wrong. And so, you know, and particularly, like, in a state of, like, things, when things are happening unfairly, and when people start to, like, they hide and they run from you and they don't support you, and then we do that. We do that, and we all are guilty of it. And what I think what's happening here is that when we disagree with you, we don't support you in your 17Fs. When we don't agree with certain people, sometimes, for example, the point of things being put in committees that, you know, are more preferable so that they can be delayed, so that they can be manipulated, so that they're not heard, and when there's lack of representation that way, then we talk about democracy and how we all have the same equal platform here, and then we see that. We see that with budget. We see that when the mayor moves votes in a way that's preferred to what she wants, and then we see that with accountability. When we want to hold people accountable, we put them in committees and we hold them in, and we're not holding people accountable. So we say we're about accountability. We say that we're here representing the people, and we say that we are a democratic body, but then when we disagree with you, then we let you out to dry. When we don't agree, when we agree with you, it's okay. And then when the mayor comes and gives you favors, then things move a certain way. So we do have to eventually, people, come on, eventually call it out. We can't allow favors and transactions to happen this way. Yes, even I, in my position, and allow the rest to happen outside of this body, will say to you, and I have been, right, consistently say that what's right is right, what's wrong is wrong. Let's stop this nonsense. Let's support our colleague in getting information, because when you need it, you're going to be, the same thing is going to be done to you. You're not going to get the information that you want, or when you need that vote, the same thing's going to happen. Budget season, guess what? You get $5,000, even if we're here till midnight. And so, I mean, 5 million in amendments, even if you're here till midnight. It's okay when it's happened to somebody else that you don't agree with, but then we complain when it happens to us. And so, let's not try to, like, hide and fend off. Let's just uphold democracy, and let's continue to work together even when we disagree. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Your floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I think I am happy to hear this because I feel like[1712.25] like this is a theme, especially today, that I have seen how, everybody knows how things happen here, and I do hope that twenty twenty-five is going to bring us a different way of treating each other and modeling different types of behavior, because while I, I, and I have seen it, and I feel like we need to stop, eh, carrying water or stop functioning as a body that is just here to go along and, and get along, because that's not our job. Our job is to be the checks and balances to the administration. Our job is not to just keep our seats and do political favors. Our jobs are to fight for and speak up on behalf of the people who put us in these seats. And so I think it's important for us to start doing our jobs without any fear of retaliation, because every time I get up to speak, I feel the retaliation coming, and I'm okay with it, because as I said before, I don't need this job to do the work. And I'm never going to leave with fear, because I am not afraid of anything but the man above, period. But I think that some of us forget who it is that we are accountable to, and we're accountable to those that we serve, and that is our master. And I think that that is a really important point for us to, uh, be our mantra for twenty twenty-five. No difference, different strokes for different folks. No more favors, no more preferences, no more of that. We are all going to have to be accountable to this body and to each other.
Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but, um, I just wanted to maybe offer a couple brief comments that might be helpful, um, maybe to Council Murphy or to the, or to the Chair. But on this information that you're requesting, Council Murphy, um, are we able to ask Do It to basically do a simple, um, check on who was hired over a period of time that you requested and, and basically get the printout and the salary? I don't, I, I think the Do It team would have access to that. And then my, my second, my second point is maybe to the Council President. If Councilor Murphy or any counselor requests some reasonable, um, request for a seventeen F, is it appropriate for this body to, um, not begin the next week's council session, council hearing at twelve o'clock until that information is actually provided to the body? Um, I think that's an appropriate request from this body to the, to the administration that we will not move the meeting forward at twelve o'clock until the relevant information is sent over. Certainly, it might not be ready within seven days if it's a, if it's a difficult request to make, but something like Council Murphy, uh, requested that could be done in a, in a half hour through a, um, a, a, a print job at Do It, that might be appropriate to get that information, uh, before we start next week's meeting at twelve o'clock. That's what I'm advocating for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Council Murphy, see suspension and passage of docket number zero one nine one. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero one nine two?
Docket number zero one nine two. Councilor Flynn offered the following resolution in support of an ethics committee at the Boston City Council.
The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Establishing an ethics committee will provide more oversight and transparency on potential violations on the Boston City Council. Elected officials placed in positions of public trust should demonstrate the highest standards of positive leadership, respect the rules and ethics. There is a precedent with ethics committee at the Massachusetts State House and obviously the United States Congress. At the municipal level, the New York City Council has a committee on standards and ethics. In Portland, Maine, their city council, a body of nine city councilors, also has a committee on ethics. The residents of Boston deserve the highest standards of leadership from their elected officials. We must not drag our feet. Now is the time for leadership. Let's get this thing, let's get this done. Let's not put this in committee and kill it there. Let's take a vote on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
I'm in support of there being a vote today. I will be voting no. I do think it's the council president's role to decide which committees exist, um, and I've been very vocal about that, so I continue to have that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. I'm, I'm not opposed to this idea. I'm a little skeptical of it, only because I caution that internal city council committees with counselors themselves holding, um, holding the reins may teeter on weaponization, um, which is, of course, the antithesis of the purpose of this committee. I would, uh, be remiss if I didn't mention that we have the State Ethics Commission and the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, of which we are subject to their jurisdiction. And so I have concerns that if not established correctly, a municipal-level ethics committee may conflict with their duties and responsibilities, which include conducting investigations, making determinations, and issuing fines if there are no, if there are violations to be found. I don't think that it's within this council's, um, jurisdiction to be investigating ourselves or imposing fines on us. Additionally, upon further research, some local ethics committees examine reports of unethical conducts, such as misuse of office, bribery, or favoritism, often involving public officials and employees. Again, already, this is a responsibility of the Ethics Committee, um, or Ethics Commission up at the state level. Um, some issue advisory opinions on specific situations to clarify ethics rules for public officials, boards, or commissions. Again, this is already a responsibility of the Ethics Commission, and these responsibilities should be given to a neutral third party or independent actors, preferably attorneys with professional experience with ethics laws, which impart, which require impartiality and lack political motives. And so for those reasons, I will be able to know if this goes to a vote, um, but I want to thank Councilor Flynn for his leadership. I believe it is well-intentioned. I just believe that it is duplicative. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to, I guess, uh, take those both comments together and say, we all know that committee creation is in the purview of the president. I would also, you know, whoever the next president is, uh, along with the colleagues deciding what beforehand, deciding what those committees are. So as a matter of process, I don't believe that this is the correct process, as Council Durkin stated. And substantively, um, like Counselor, uh, Coletta Zapata, I do believe that it is well-intentioned, but we are a small body of thirteen members, uh, that it could very easily be manipulated. That's why I've already twice asked the State Ethics Commission. This year we'll have two presentations from the State Ethics Commission on conflicts of interest. I'm open to having additional methods that we can do that as a lawyer, as someone who has worked on one, um, ethics investigation. I still don't feel qualified to sit as judge and jury against you, my colleagues, right? As the president of this body, I'll work with the Massachusetts, Massachusetts State Ethics Commission. I'll continue to work with. We now have a second attorney as a member of central staff, and we've been exploring about how, or ways that we can not only, um, strengthen the city council, but standardize certain practices across offices to make sure that it is a good working environment for everyone. Um, and so I think it's really important that, you know, any, anything regarding ethics remains independent, so we, uh, maintain the public trust and that we hold it in high regard. Um, and I think that there's just, um, you know, perhaps, there are other cities that have larger city councils that have ethics committees, where there's also at the municipal level an ethics body that is not something that we have here. And so I do think that the best use of our time and our resources is to continue to work more collaboratively with the State Ethics Commission. They are very friendly and open if you have any questions at all, and we'll make sure that they have a greater presence. But we're trying to make sure that they have a greater presence on this body to make sure that public trust remains paramount here and that we're doing as best as we can, the new colleagues among us, the older colleagues among us, to abide by the ethics rules, this OCPF, as, uh, Council Coletta Zapata stated, this is State Ethics Commission, um, and we'll continue to, to do the work, um, without, uh, you know, establishing a committee that could very easily be politicized on a body such as ours. The Chair recognizes Councilman here. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to, uh, just remind folks that we are working on establishing the Office of, the Office of Inspector General. Let's see how that works. But the goal is if we can get back to the finish line, if the administration and the powers that be allow us to have the audacity to do such a thing, then we can probably, this could be a space where that type of work could happen, independent of this body. Because to be honest with you, even though I'm part of this body, I don't even trust government myself, and I think that it's really important for us to have true independence. And I think we don't, we're not there. And so I think the Office of Inspector General, if we can establish one here in the city of Boston, could be well-suited to handle those situations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, I, I'm, while I, I support strong ethics rules, uh, and as somebody who's, as an attorney, worked for eighteen years, uh, as a licensed attorney, working subject to very strict ethics rules, I think we should look at making sure we have very strong rules in place. I'm skeptical of the idea of having a committee of our own members enforcing those rules. I think it's a better policy to have them being enforced by a third party like the State Ethics Commission. Also, you know, I think, uh, as we, we talked about, uh, I don't think New York is a great example. There's fifty-one counselors from fifty-one separate districts there. You know, here we've got nine districts. I just think the, the, uh, the opportunity for, uh, you know, bad behavior is too much on, with an ethics, ethics committee of half of the members of this council. So I will be voting against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, can you just clarify, are we going forward with a vote or did someone object to, um, having this discussion?
I heard no objection.
Okay, so we, we are going forward with the vote?
If you would like to vote, uh, if you're seeking a vote, we're moving forward for vote.
No, I, I want to give everybody an opportunity to be heard. I think that's, um, that's important.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Council Flynn, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of, if there's, if anyone else would like to speak on this matter, now is the moment. You may speak on this matter if you'd like to speak on this matter. Okay. Uh, Council Flynn, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number zero nine two. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero one nine two. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, no. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, no. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, present. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Zinn.
No.
Counsel Louie Zinn, no. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, no. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, no. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, no. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, no. And Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, no. Eight votes in the affirmative, three votes in the negative, and one present.
Sorry, I didn't.
Sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight votes in the negative, and three votes i- in the affirmative, and one present.
Thank you. This docket has not been adopted. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero one nine three?
Docket number zero one nine three. Counselors Mejia and Braden offer the following resolution supporting the full disbursement of unspent appropriations for participatory budgeting from fiscal years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman here. Councilman here, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, and I just want to just acknowledge that I am filing this hearing, uh, this resolution. Uh, Counselor Braden is the, the lead sponsor, so I just want to acknowledge that, but since she's not here today, she's, her office has asked me to be the lead sponsor, and, uh, Counselor Braden is the second co-sponsor. So I just wanted to acknowledge that this work has been done under her leadership. Um, and so I just wanted to file this resolution supporting the full disbursement of unspent participatory budget, budgeting funds. Boston residents voted overwhelmingly to, um, put the decision-making power directly into the hands of the people. This is about honoring that promise and ensuring that our budget reflects the priorities and values of our communities. And again, this is another opportunity for us to stand in support of those who have been asking us to show up for them. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to be voting no. I, I do want the vote, I do want it to go for a, a vote and not go into committee, um, out of respect for my, my colleagues. I'm going to be voting no on this for, for several reasons. Yes, the public did vote in favor of the participatory budget. I also know that times have changed, and that money, if there is unspent money, should go back into the general fund to support homeowners, taxpayers with tax relief. Participatory budget, we, we will have young people, as young as fifteen or sixteen years old, voting to fund various city programs or recommending, I should say, funding various programs. Now is not the time for social experiments. Now is the time for leadership. Let's put that money into the general fund, provide tax assistance, relief to homeowners, especially our seniors, persons with disability, disabilities, and, and longtime Boston residents, struggling families. We, we can't afford to be experimenting with every single program that comes online. Now is the time for leadership. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, through the Chair, if I could ask a question to the lead sponsor?
You may.
Um, Counsel Mejia, are you aware of the total amount of unspent appropriations added up over the past several years that you're looking to disburse?
Five million.
Five million. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Fernandez Anderson, Pepe, Santana, uh, Coletta Zapata, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Counselors Mejia and Murphy seek?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. Counselors Mejia and Braden, seek suspension of the rules and pass and adoption of docket number zero one nine three. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero one nine three. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, present. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, no. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louie Zinn.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Zinn, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
No.
Counsel Murphy, no. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, yes. Eight votes in the affirmative, three votes in the negative, and one present.
Thank you. Uh, Mr., uh, this docket, uh, has passed, uh, has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number zero one nine four?
Docket number zero one nine four. Counsel Flynn offered the following resolution in support of, of a domestic violence and sexual assault committee at the Boston City Council.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This new year, I am respectfully asking my city council colleagues to reconsider a standalone committee on domestic violence and sexual assault. I've been calling for this committee since I ran for city council years ago. I've been deeply involved with issues relating to domestic violence and sexual assaults and served on this council seven years ago, and as I mentioned, I held hearings in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, with then council president, now Attorney General Andrea Campbell, as well as resolutions with Council Michael Flaherty to recognize domestic violence awareness month. I've also worked closely with a number of organizations, including the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence, CASA, CASA MIRNA, to continue the work, as I mentioned earlier, of my mother, who sold to sup, who sold to support survivors of domestic violence during her term, her time as First Lady of Boston. As I mentioned, this is a difficult issue for families to talk about openly. It impacts everybody. I've been moved by stories from many survivors. I've been moved by stories from many survivors. I'm asking my colleagues today to once again support this new standalone committee on domestic violence and sexual assault, to ensure we are doing everything we can to increase awareness, support survivors, offer resources, and reporting opportunities for those who have experienced domestic violence here in the city and across Massachusetts as well. Let's provide the critical leadership our survivors deserve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn, and thank you for how much you care about this issue. This is an issue that I care about deeply as a former victim of sexual assault myself, as a woman, as a black woman in a city and just in a world where disproportionately women, low-income women, women of color themselves are victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And of course, it's not just limited to women. This is an issue that I've worked alongside so many on this issue, both in a personal capacity in my own family and in my capacity as a legislator now. And so this is an issue that I care deeply about, that the councils before us have cared deeply about. Counselor, Counselwoman, now Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, former Counselor Ayanna Pressley was very intentional about the creation of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities that has direct language in there about domestic violence and sexual assault. And so I'm against the creation of a standalone committee. It's very clear that it's within the purview of the city council president, and it happens at the beginning of our legislative cycle. And I believe that we have a committee that addresses these issues. And, you know, even just today, we heard a number of grants that are going to address domestic violence. And so I look forward to continuing this work alongside my filing, my re-filing that was earlier, alongside Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, but with you as well, Counselor Flynn, and for everyone who cares about this issue. It is an issue that we should all care about and work to address because it's really, really, really hard to root out of our communities. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And again, this is the same sort of situation, Counselor Flynn. Well-intentioned, but I think strictly talking about government operations structure, I am going to vote no on this. We all know that the urgency and importance of addressing domestic violence are undisputable, but I do think that because of the fact that in the past, and I did go through the rules and such, and we do still have to change our website, city council, central staff, I went to go check the Strong Women in Families wording. In the past, it had made domestic violence a core issue, as intended by then-city councilor Ayanna Pressley. Doesn't include it now, but there are a lot of overlaps between that committee as well as the Committee on Public Safety. I do think that if we are introducing a new committee, and again, it is under the purview of the council president, but in the event that we had the power to do that, introducing a new committee, you know, we have to consider duplicating efforts, diverting attention away from existing structures that are already equipped to handle these issues. And so I think that we should remain efficient in our work and just not duplicate oversight because that ultimately does not serve the goal. So I appreciate it again, and I appreciate your work on this issue, but I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I'll be voting no, and no one should take that to mean I don't care about sexual violence and domestic abuse. I was on the floor last year. I've been the victim of sexual violence. I've been the victim of drugging in the city of Boston, and I didn't feel comfortable coming forward to the police department when that took place. And so this is such an important issue to me. It's such an important issue to the council. And I think I've stood firm. I don't think that we should be filing things to create committees. That is the purview of the city council president. I also want to be very clear that these issues happen both to women and men, and so I understand that strong women fami, and, you know, strong women, that committee may feel gendered in a way. So if there is a way for us to incorporate, you know, I think there are two committees that could hold these topics. It's both public health and strong women and families. So essentially, we have two committees that are great places for this work to go. And I think it's very clear to me that there is a genderedness in language and that women and men experience domestic violence, women and men experience sexual violence, and it's very important for us to center that. And at this time, it's just, it's very clear from now, it's been six filings, that our council colleagues are not comfortable making committees or making resolutions through this type of legislation. So I don't know what we can do to fix that in the future, but I do think that it wastes government time to continue to bring these forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I'm going to stand as the former chair of public health, current chair of Strong Women, Families and Communities, also public safety. It ties into many of the issues, the important topics we address could be covered under many different committees. I think anything related to schools could be in my committee because it's families and community. But that being said, I think we have to leave our egos at the door and be willing to have conversations. So like you said, you're not sure what else to do. I think it's important, and I'll file it for next week, that we have a hearing in the Rules Committee to discuss the committees because if one of our colleagues, there's only 13 of us, we just made that clear, that this body is small compared to other city councils. There's 13 of us, and we don't have to agree on policy, but we should be working together. And I'm not saying people should agree that these certain committees be added, but I think it's important that we don't just shut down conversations here on the floor, and we should have a Rules Committee where we go through the committees and talk about the issues. Because I know people over this past year have been not, not happy about where committees land, based on the fact that they could be in many different committees. And yes, the president and the clerk in the meeting you had before here, you have the right to place it where you want, but when one of our colleagues feels very strongly about something, I am going to vote yes. We will not. We already know how the vote's going to go, but I will be filing something to have us, and I hope we all attend. I hope all of us show up. Last time when Counselor Flynn was president, he had three meetings in the Curly Room to go through the rules. You were there, Clerk. The first one, we had to wait to start because no one else showed up. I think the second one, there were three of us, including the president. So people didn't really take it seriously, and I think it's important that we use that power we also have to come together without breaking any violations of open meeting law and have a conversation of a body to make sure that this next year, that we're starting off now, that we're stronger as a body and we are able to move the legislation and the support we want to give our residents in a much stronger way. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I respect everything my colleagues have mentioned here today, with one exception, and I don't disagree with their position. They have to take, make their position known and stand by it. But one, one particular point that bothered me is that we're wasting government time here. That, that hurt, that we're wasting government time. In my opinion, we're not wasting government time. We're talking about a serious issue that impacts a lot of women, impacts, impacts men as well. The serving in the military, the sexual assault against men is, is very high. Certainly very high against, against women as well, but it's very high against, against men. It's very high in the LGBTQ plus community. It's very high in the immigrant community. It impacts every demographic, whether it's wealthy people or poor people or African-American, white, Hispanic. So I'm offended, really, by saying that I'm wasting people's time talking about domestic violence. This is something I've been focused on my entire life. As I mentioned, my mother has been active on this issue for so many years, and I'm not, I'm not going to give up, and I'm going to continue advocating for this position, whether it's here in the body or publicly. I think it's an important issue, and when we come into this body, we talk about serious issues. We're not wasting, we're not, we're not wasting government time. Wasting government time is not showing up for meetings during the week. I probably have the highest percentage of attendance record of any colleague here. But the last thing I'm here to do is waste anyone's time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify, I think I well understood what Counselor Durkin was saying. There are two issues in terms of time. There's a process issue, there's a substantive issue. Both myself and Counselor Durkin, as people who have been victims of sexual assault, will probably talk your ear off all day about domestic violence and about sexual assault from experiences of my own family, from experiences of the, us as legislators. So the substance of it is not what Counselor Durkin was opposing. The substance of talking about domestic violence and sexual assault is not what anyone is opposing. I think she's talking about the process. And I have, this is only my second term, my, my first term, no one, as a matter of process, filed to have a committee on the council president, right? It's in the purview of the council president as a matter of process. So as a matter of process, filing resolutions for a committee when, if, to be respectful of the position of the president of the city council is within the purview of my office, that it's a waste of government time to file a resolution on something that I, for whatever reason, am not respected enough to be the one who is in charge of creating committees. And I'm sorry that you feel differently. You were past city council president. No one, I, I never did this. I never filed a resolution for a committee while you were city council president, and I would appreciate, I say this in front of all of my colleagues, I would appreciate that it's not something that you continue to do with me as city council president. Why? For whatever reason, you feel the need to do it on me, it's, I, I don't appreciate it. And to whoever the next city council president may be, it's not something that I would do to them either. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
I just want to.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you did have your light on prior, but, okay. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Counselor Murphy, thank you. Council President Louie Zhen, thank you so much. So I think, you know, I don't want to move it to a vote because I don't want to cut people's off or whatever, but if anybody outside of the people who have spoken, we should move it to a vote. I'm not suggesting that, I'm not making that motion right now. I'm just, I just wanted to make the point that I, there are several committees that I think about, you know, like I want a science commission, like a, like a science committee because I think that it should go through like scientists and academics to figure out like the environmental impacts and other types of scientific, like evidence that we need and research that we need inside of the city. I also think that, you know, when we get into more of the granular level kind of conversations, like if we just take one topic, domestic violence or, you know, sexual assault, and we put it into its own committee, then we're leaving it open to get very granular, and then we'll have like a thousand committees. I want to do things like, I think the council meeting should be held from like 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. so that constituents can participate. I think that it's backwards, that it's 12:00 to 3:00 in, like during the day where everybody, all, it's four constituents, and they're only digital, and a lot of people have issues like accessing it. And people, if they want to participate, they have to sit here all day with us during their work hours, or they have to take off work. So I don't think it's convenient. I think that other cities do it at night. We should move it tonight. I think that we should limit rules, we should change the rules to like limit how many filings per counselor, but I know you guys will fight me on that, so I'm not going to do it. But I, I think there are a lot of things that I want to do. I just take into consideration how granular are we getting? Does this make sense? Are we going into like, you know, talking on, if, if we're getting that granular, we also have to be careful that therapeutic-wise, it's not advisable. And so we can't necessarily get into like conversations that are so granular that we would need a medical professional in that conversation in order to do some intervention work or crisis management. And so I just, that's where I disagree, Counselor Flynn. I think, you know what I mean? Like, Counselor Flynn, like if I, if we start talking real granular and someone comes in and spills out, psychologically, like you would have to sort of, you're peeling a Band-Aid and that, that wound starts bleeding. And so in therapy, there are rules about that, and so people can become, you can trigger someone for suicidality if you're not careful in opening up conversations on that granular level. And so that is my only concern, so I'll vote present because I do, I do, I do want to do different things like, and I don't think there's anything, technically, there's anything wrong with you filing a resolution just to go on record to asking your colleagues to agree. I do hear Council President Louie Zhen too, though, that the courtesy that she's asking is the one that she extended to you, not, not to suggest committees outside of her purview because that is the, that is a rule, and she, you know, we, we try to respect you as a president too, when you were there. So technically, it's okay for you to file a resolution, say, look, I just want your opinion on this, but also it's not very professionally courteous, so. But so I'll vote present. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to go on record to say, I think we need to be more sensitive and empathetic and not make assumptions that only people who have been willing to share personal information about this specific topic, about any topic we talk about. We talk about serious, sensitive things here on the council. I don't want to make assumptions or hear from certain counselors that there's an assumption that only certain people know better because they have chosen, which is their choice, to openly share something. So I think that's something that we should all be sensitive to going forward.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm disappointed in the comments from the, from the chair and from Counselor Durkin about, about me. I thought, I, I took it as a personal attack, and I'm disappointed in that, but I'm not going to respond with, with something that's inappropriate, such as what happened, happened to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we were just asking for the courtesy of respecting the body of the president. The chair, Counselor Flynn. You, you may.
Yeah. Madam Chair, you, you personally attacked me, as did, as did Counselor Durkin, and I, and I, I take that personally, and you, you want to keep the conversation going. I'm, I'm willing to move on, but you're able to, you want to continue this conversation.
We can, we can, we can move on. Your office is always open, Counselor Flynn. You have not, you, you can always come to my office. We can always talk about these issues all of the time. I, I promise you, off the record, we can talk outside of this relationship here. Thank you. We are now going to move forward. Counselor Flynn has filed resolution. He would like, he would like a vote on the, the chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
I, I, I think we need a break, just two minutes. Like, I think we need a break, just two minutes. Can we, a motion for recess?
Take a two-minute recess. We are in a recess for two minutes. We are back in session. I think everyone is here, okay. Not sure if there are any additional. If anyone else would like to speak on this matter on docket number 0194? Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay. Counselor Flynn, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0194. Mr. Clark, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0194. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, no. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, no. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, present. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, no. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Zhen.
No.
Counselor Louie Zhen, no. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe. Counselor Pepe, no. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, no. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, no. And Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, no.
Thank you. This docket has not been adopted. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0195?
Docket number 0195. Counselor Flynn and Murphy offer the following. Resolution supporting project labor agreements at White Stadium and all city of Boston construction projects valued at more than $35 million.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been clear that I am opposed to the White Stadium project for many reasons. The risk involved with nearly $100 million of taxpayer money to help support a private organization on public land. That I would like to see a project geared toward student athletes instead and Boston families, that the city and the professional women's soccer team should instead explore a partnership that I researched on with Boston University for the use of Nickerson Field, as I mentioned earlier. for the use of Nickerson Field, as I mentioned earlier. But if this project continues to move forward, which it seems like it is, I think it's important that we, as a body, support the use of project labor agreements at White Stadium and other locations to ensure equal payment for workers with the wage floor and promote a diverse workforce. Didn't we talk here earlier about wage theft? In December 2023, President Biden implemented an executive order to require project labor agreement for most large-scale federal construction projects. This will help ensure that large federal construction projects are completed efficiently and on time, while also supporting high-quality jobs. Last month, Governor Healey signed the historic Economic Development Bill, which includes language supporting the use of project labor agreements on public construction projects in the Commonwealth. A project labor agreement is a project-specific collective bargaining agreement on large-scale development projects between unions and contractors. This agreement establishes employment terms and conditions for a construction project, including hiring regulations that could require contractors to hire local workers, apprenticeship programs, underrepresented groups. Don't we have a biannual meeting here at the Boston City Council to discuss Boston jobs for Boston residents? Don't we have the public come in here and testify about this twice a year? Or are we just giving people lip service? The agreement can include wage floors, detail important benefits, such as retirement, health and welfare contributions, and can help ensure that projects have a quality, highly trained and diverse workforce. Don't we talk in this body about supporting women-owned companies? It can establish provisions to create opportunities for women and people of color, creating a workforce advantage over development sites that do not have project labor agreements in place. Project labor agreements also protect workers against wage theft, as I mentioned, and ensure workers are paid a decent wage. We also know that immigrant workers, undocumented workers, don't receive their fair pay. Or are we going to, are we going to deny that as well in this body? Pretend it doesn't happen? Wage theft is often prevalent in the construction industry for several reasons, including falsified records, illegal deductions, misclassification of workers. PLAs have clauses to prevent these instances of wage theft. PLAs are often set in place in private developments. However, it is crucial that the agreements are wider, are more widely utilized in Boston and the Commonwealth. I agree, they're controversial. And I also agree, many of the media don't necessarily like project labor agreements. But we can't be for them when the, when, under good conditions and when it's politically convenient. That's easy. Can we be for project labor agreements when it's difficult, when you have an administration asking you not to support it? That's the challenge. That's the vote. It's important that economic development opportunities benefit our local communities and those who are often shut out, especially in this case of the White Stadium project. I urge my colleagues to support this resolution. Ensure workers are paid a fair wage, protected while working on the White Stadium project. We should always support our workers, gender, ethnic diversity, in the construction industry, regardless of whether it is politically convenient. And my friends and colleagues, it's not politically convenient right now. It's going to be a difficult vote. The easy vote will, will kill it and put it in committee. That's the easy vote. That's not profiles and courage. But if we want to be consistent in supporting of working men and women, let's support this project labor agreement and let's provide workers and ensure that they're treated with dignity and respect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Counsel Flynn, you said mostly what I wanted to say, but just to reiterate that I think would be important that we send a strong message from the council here that we're in support of our union workers, our construction workers. I was at all of those meetings here. And what we found out at the last meeting a couple of months ago is the few tools we do have, they're, the benchmarks are never met, and we don't have any way, or we don't choose to use our power to make sure that things are done right. And so something as big as White Stadium, any projects that we can control, who we hire, I think it's important that we do. And that's a good start going forward. And I hope that my colleagues support and send a message to our union workers that we care about making sure that these project labor agreements are going to be supported here on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I think based on my experience as an attorney and my work on this council, I, I don't think you could find a stronger supporter of union labor than me. But, you know, it's come to my attention that, you know, calling for a project labor agreement on a specific project might result in litigation that will actually make it harder for, for a project labor agreement to be worked out or, and for this project to even go forward. The first thing that would happen in a litigation is a request for an injunction and a stop on construction. And we know with this particular project that a lengthy delay will result in it not happening at all, which will greatly impact the workers who are supposedly trying to benefit by doing this. And, you know, here trying to figure out why this is being filed by the maker who is strongly opposed to the project, you know, could be that the delay is exactly what is being, is what is hoped for. You know, I think it's important for us to be careful about this. Two city employees just a few years ago were, were, you know, tried for violating the Hobbs Act for pushing the use of union labor on the Boston Calling project. For those reasons and to sort of alleviate my concerns, I'm objecting to this, and I ask that it be sent to committee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Weber has objected to this resolution. It does, I do see your light, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, but it does end debate. And this docket will be sent to committee. This docket, docket number 0195. Docket number 0195 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce and Economic Development. The Chair recognizes Counsel Angie Anderson, point of order.
This is where I use that, that preference on setting precedents. You know, the precedence in the past has been that you allow, at least if you see the, if you see the mic on, you allow people to speak before it closes, but then anything after that that you do not allow. So this is what I meant by clarification on whether things are rules or whether things have precedents. When do we use them, our preferences? When do we choose to and not choose to? It's in my, it's in my district, nobody else's district, and you didn't allow them to speak?
No, I hear that. I hear that. I, it's not a rule that I like. It's not a practice that I like. But I think it, you know, to, in order to be, to try to standardize it, sending it to committee and cutting off debate is, is what, is what I'm going to try to follow. Earlier, it was a matter where I wasn't sure. It was a communication, so I wasn't sure sort of the procedure on the spending pass. But it does end debate, and it does send it to committee. I don't.
So from now on.
Yes.
Clarification. And I'm not taking it personal. You will follow all the rules, every single one of them, and you will choose to use precedents, historic precedents, when you choose to? What are we doing? Are we going to do when we have set precedents in the previous year? We're going to follow that? Or are you going to follow the rules all the time?
I am going to try my very best till whenever there's an objection on a resolution, which is clear to me, whenever there's a resolution on a suspension and passage, to end debate and then to move on.
Your point was that you were going to follow it because it was a rule. So from now on, we're following rules all the way. That's what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Madam Chair, I was disappointed in Counsel Weber's comments. I, I also took them as a personal attack.
No, but see, this is, I just want to interject because.
But, but Madam Chair, but he, he, he called me out in a personal manner, and I, I feel like I have the right to.
And this is why the rule is hard to, to really enforce. This is an example. Yes.
Madam Chair, you recognize me.
Yes. You have the, you have the floor, Counsel Flynn. I apologize. Yes. You have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you. This docket will be sent to the Committee on Labor.
Madam Chair, I thought you were going to.
Oh, I'm sorry. You may continue. You may continue.
I, Counselor Weber, I, I felt that was a personal attack on me. And he questioned, he questioned basically my integrity in saying, why am I filing this hearing order? Resolution. That's one of the first times someone questioned my integrity on this, on this body, Counsel Weber. And I resent that. I don't, I don't, I don't like that. I've worked too hard in my life to have someone question my integrity. And the second point, I have a better record than you, Counsel Weber, on workers' rights. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I do know that you were called out personally. I do know that you were directed to personally. But because you objected and because this is being sent to committee, I want to end debate and send this to committee. This is a hard rule to enforce, to end debate when there is a discussion. I will allow your point of clarification, then we are moving on.
Thank you, Madam President. I do think that you owe Counselor Weber some time to speak. This is not on the docket, rather, it's specifically to a comment where he was called out, and he deserves an opportunity to respond.
Are you, counsel, I mean, I would like to end debate if, if, but if you would like to respond, you may. And then, if you could please, I'm going to ask, if you could please keep your comments in general, so there is no more calling out of anyone, so that we can end debate and move on. Thank you.
You are my counsel president. I'll follow your advice and limit my comments to this. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to personnel orders. Before I do that, does anybody want to add their name to a docket or to a matter when they were out of chambers, when they left for a moment? The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Could you please add my name to docket numbers 0134, 0148, 0168, 0173?
Okay. Can you just do, speak slower?
Yep.
And you can direct it to the clerk.
First one?
First one, 0134. 0148. 0168. 0176. And the last one, 0182. Thank you, clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you for doing all of that. Did you get all of that?
Yes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin.
Thank you so much. Clerk, I'd like to add my name to 0146 and then 0149. Oh, sorry, not 0149, 0150.
0146?
Yes, and 0150.
Well, that was withdrawn, so.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
1150?
0150. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Angie Anderson.
Madam President, through, Madam President, Mr. Clerk, may I be added to 138 and 158 and 166? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I just be, can I add my name to docket number 0163?
Mr. Clerk, did you get that?
Yes.
Docket number 0163? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
Madam President, I'd like to be added to docket number 0167. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Clerk. I know it's work on your part whenever things are out of order, so I appreciate you being able to do that. Okay, we are now on to personnel orders.
Personnel orders, docket number 0196, Counsel Lou Jean for Counsel Mejia. And docket number 0197, personnel order, Counsel Lou Jean for Counsel Fernandez Anderson. And docket number 0198, personnel order, Counsel Lou Jean for Counsel Mejia.
The Chair moves to passage of dockets number 0196 through 0198. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Are there any? Okay, no green sheet pulls. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are, there are five, six late file matters.
Four.
Four personnel orders and.
One absence letter.
And one absence letter and one council hearing order.
Yes.
We will take the four personnel orders first. We'll take a vote to add the four personnel, well, we'll do personnel order and the absence letter together. The four personnel orders and the absence letter to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. These late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, clerk, can you please read these late file matters into the record?
First late file matter, personnel order, Counsel Lou Jean for Counsel Weber. Second late file matter, personnel order, Counsel Lou Jean for Counsel Weber. Third late file matter, personnel order, Counsel Lou Jean for office staff employee. And fourth personnel order, Counsel Lou Jean again.
Thank you. The Chair moves to passage of these late file matters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The personnel orders and the, have been adopted, and the absence letter will be placed on file.
I didn't read the absence.
Oh, can you please read the absence letter into the record?
From City Council Liz Brayden, dear counselors, I'm writing to inform you of my absence from today's regular meeting of the Boston City Council. I am currently recovering from recent knee replacement surgery and look forward to attending meetings in the Ayonella Chamber as soon as I'm able. Respectfully, Counselor Brayden.
Thank you. We wish Counsel Brayden a speedy recovery, and we also wish her a very happy birthday. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the council hearing order, late file, into the record?
Order of, offered by Counselor Worrell, order for a hearing to examine Boston Public Schools closures for 2026, 2027, and its long-term facilities plan. Whereas because of the urgent need for immediate action in response to unforeseen circumstances impacting the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Boston, an emergency declaration is hereby necessary to expedite the filing and consideration of this order. And be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing on the financial future of the Boston Public Schools and capital and operating needs.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matter, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The late file matter has been added to the agenda. It has been read into the record. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor.
Counsel Murphy is so added. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm following this in the wake of this week's news about Boston Public Schools that are closing emergent for this 2026, 2027 school year and ahead of the superintendent's long-term facility announcement at the January 22 school committee meeting. It will always be hard to close a school. It's a blow to the community, the students, the teachers, the alumni. And I want to make sure when we're supporting, that we're supporting all of them through this transition. As we aim to ensure BPS is delivering a top-notch education to every student that prepares them for whatever future they might be, we need to have a long-term facilities plan to best use resources and meet students' needs. With declining enrollment, BPS needs to right-size to ensure that every student is in a high-quality learning environment. And I'm committed to working to ensure that those decisions are equitable and students and families are supported in this transition. Looking forward to this hearing and looking forward to engaging on the long-term facilities plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counsel Worrell, for letting me join you on this emergency late file. Since I heard the other day about these announcements, it came from staff at one of the schools that was, said that, you know, the BTU had gone and told them and rumors started. And we always know when it's rumors, that it's never going to end well. So I was deeply frustrated by the lack of communication in Boston Public Schools regarding the closure of Excel High, the Dever and the Mary Lion, and the merger of several other schools. I reached out to the superintendent and other BPS officials after hearing rumors about potential closures of several schools, yet my questions were ignored. My phone call wasn't responded to or my text. And I do believe, like, it seems like the theme of this meeting, and I've brought. And I do believe, like, it seems like the theme of this meeting, and I've brought it up on other things I've filed today, it's unacceptable that I, along with families and other colleagues here on the council, had to wait for official confirmation while decisions were being made behind closed doors. While I understand the need to address declining enrollment, the underutilization of schools, and the challenges of aging buildings, we must ensure that closures, merges, and new construction are handled thoughtfully and transparently. Decisions of this magnitude must include meaningful input from school communities, not just announcements after the fact. I do believe our students, our families, our educators, and the city as a whole deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counsel Orell and Counsel Murphy for filing this important discussion. One of the high schools that was placed on the closure list is a high school that I previously taught as a substitute schoolteacher, South Boston High School. At that time, it was called Monument High School, now it's called Excel High School. But one issue that I do want to highlight is, I was never contacted by Boston Public School system prior to the announcement. I read about it through a press release from BPS late at night, at, I believe around 8:30 at night, two nights ago. BPS staff and/or Boston Teachers Union were up at Excel High School talking and telling, telling teachers that the school was closing, and immediately word got out from that meeting that the school was closing even before the officials from BPS left the building, calling my office and other elected officials, asking what's happening at Excel High School. And until this, until right now, I had one conversation with their Director of Community Engagement at BPS after the fact. Disappointed to say the least in the lack of transparency from the BPS team and the lack of respect for teachers, for parents, for the South Boston High School community. They deserve a little bit more than that. They deserve a little bit more respect than they were shown by Boston Public Schools Department. And I hope this isn't the way that this process is going to move going forward, is just a top-down, heavy-hand approach of deciding what schools are closing. South Boston High School is closing. I think there was three or four schools in John Fitzgerald's district that are probably merging as well. Not sure if John received any word from anybody, or if the at-large members were involved in this. But the transparency was not there, the lack of respect for teachers, for BPS families, for students. Let me highlight another issue, one that I've been involved in for a long period of time. Their junior ROTC program at Excel High School is exceptional. You can't find a more diverse group of students than the kids at Excel High School. They don't have money, they don't have influence, they don't have political support, but they have a determination to be successful, to prove themselves that they want to contribute something in society. And they're doing that for the junior ROTC program. And what are we gonna do? We're gonna sit here and let it happen? We're not even gonna speak out for them, because it's politically inconvenient. Well, it happened to my school two nights ago, and maybe it happens to another district counselor down the road. And you have the option of remaining silent and doing nothing until it impacts your community, and then you'll speak out. But our teachers deserve better, our students deserve better, our community deserve better. And that's not the way you treat people with such a lack of respect. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. To my colleague, I didn't get motivated when he said district councilors, I was always gonna speak, but I think, so I think it's a good, I think it's a good plan. I looked at it, I have a lot of experience in these schools. The Wintrop should close, it should merge with the Lila Frederick. The Dever, long overdue, either renovation or reopen, but if you go in that school, you'll know why. The district, my colleague's district deserves better. I agree with, I agree with Counsel Flynn. I just think that if you're cutting costs, Excel High School, OMG. When we talk about ventilation issues, heating and HVAC issues, or whatever you call it, security, conditions, walls peeling, water, safe water to drink, air quality, all of it, it needs, that building needs to be tore down. I don't think that the way that it was handled, and I'm not gonna speak too much of that, because I think, you know, God bless our mayor and the baby, she's due this month. So there, there could be some like exacerbation there in terms of schedule and how this is happening, and it's the beginning of the year, we have a mayor that is expecting, so we wish for her to have a healthy, strong baby. And, but then, so I don't know what happened in communication, so I can't necessarily be judgmental in terms of how it happened. But I do agree that it could have been done better. It could have been executed in a more transparent, more, you know, advanced notice. But I don't know what the reasons are, so I'm not going to say, you know, you did a bad job. I'm going to say, hey, maybe you have a reason. I want to hear what those reasons are, I want to discuss them. But when you look at, we're moving into full inclusion, we're looking into covering, cutting costs, and we talk about high-quality education or world-class education for all, you have to do mergers. You have to look at what schools can be closed and merging and all that stuff. The communication just has to be more transparent, it has to be more efficient, so that we're included, so that we are collaborating or communicating to teachers and the parents, and also students, and bringing that information to our community. That's all. And here, I think, hopefully, it can, all of that can be mitigated and hopefully planned for the future in a better way through your hearing. Thank you so much to the lead sponsor for filing.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please, of the chair, and add Counselor Coletta Zapata. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Education. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. I'll start by saying this Friday at 4:00 PM in City Hall in the Scoli Art Gallery, there's going to be an exhibit by the Haitian Artist Assembly of Massachusetts. It's a yearly event that we do. It's really, really lovely and beautiful. There's an amazing artist who is 12 years old, who is an amazing artist who comes and shows her artwork alongside so many others. It'll be at 4:00 PM here downstairs on Friday for all who would like to attend. Okay, are there any other announcements? I'd also like to uplift, you know, Counsel Mejia's birthday was on January 1st. We mentioned these at the last meeting, but bear, I'm gonna say them again. Counsel Fernandez Anderson on January 4th, happy birthday, as well as my Chief of Staff. Also, January 4th, Emily Polston, happy birthday, and to our Counselor, Counselor Brayden, whose birthday is today. Are there any additional announcements? No? Okay. We are now moving on to... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
No, just wanted to take the moment today is my wife's birthday, so I wanted to wish her a public happy birthday, so, you know, not in trouble when I get home.
So you don't get home? You're in trouble when you get home? Okay, happy birthday to your wife. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. We are now moving on to memorials. If you would like to speak on behalf of anyone who has passed, now is the moment. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. As a Georgia native, and I didn't know I was gonna make this history, but the first city councilor from the South, I want to lift up the late President Jimmy Carter today on behalf of the city council. At 100 years old, President Carter was the longest-living U.S. president. Sitting in my office, I have books and autobiographies about him and his life and his wife, and he was born in Plains, Georgia, just a couple hours from where I'm from. He was remembered as a global humanitarian and is visionary on issues like climate change and human rights. He always believed that politics could be used to effect social change, and he was an activist for civil rights throughout his career, even when it was hard. After his political career, he continued to advocate for advancing democracy and human rights and won a Nobel Peace Prize. As we prepare for the upcoming administration this month, I want to remember President Carter's campaign pledge, which was to never tell a lie, which might have cost him reelection, but it makes him one of the most wonderful presidents that we've ever had. And I want to leave you with this quote from his farewell address in 1981. "Our American values are not luxuries but necessities, not the salt in our bread but the bread itself. Our common vision of a free and just society is our greatest source of cohesion at home and strength abroad, even today's even greater than the bounty of all our material blessings." It's my honor to uplift his memory at today's council meeting.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin, and thank you for being a Georgian on the council to uplift our great, late President, President Carter. Is anyone else would like to speak on anyone? I'd like to uplift a few names. And I know this was also, you care deeply about this, Counsel Durkin, because this is in your district, the school he attended, Boston Arts Academy, but Kyrie Ambrose was a young man who devastatingly passed away, who was a beloved member of the dance community here, and it's just been such a shock to so many here in the city of Boston. He's a member of the dance community, and I was at his memorial for him yesterday, and it was just deeply, deeply overwhelming and sad to see the number of children who are out there remember him. I want to uplift his mother, Rena Ambrose, who spoke about how he was able to, he danced before he even walked. And I just want to uplift his memory at this time. There was also a big slate of folks who passed as we were entering into the holiday season. Former Attorney General Francis Bellotti, who is beloved here and was very active up until the last minute being present outside. Minister Don Muhammad, who did so much for Boston and the Roxbury community, helping to open one of the first banks here in Roxbury, and really, you know, always endlessly advocating for our community. Dr. Charles Launey of High Park, who just did an incredible amount for the High Park community, not only in his medical practice, but in how much he showed up for community, particularly his work with the Haitian community and in Haiti. Dr. Launey's memory will not be forgotten. I had the pleasure of being with his family earlier this year as we celebrated his retirement. And also Democratic State Committee Member Walter McDonough, who many folks here know, who was just very active in political life here in the Commonwealth and in the city of Boston, and who's, who lost his mother earlier this year. And his passing was a real blow to so many who know him in the political world. So I'll be saying these names, but just wanted to uplift them because they each left their mark, mark here in the city and deserve to be recognized and named. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to uplift the name of Joseph Joe Donahue, who was a lifelong resident of Charlestown. He passed away tragically due to an act of senseless gun violence in Charlestown on January 4th. He was just 46 years old, and so my heart and thoughts and prayers go out to his loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you mentioned Frank Bellotti. I also want to mention Frank Bellotti, former Attorney General, who was a close friend of mine, close friend of his son, Michael, and his family. And as you mentioned, Frank lived till he was 100, and his wife recently passed away several, two years ago, I believe. But I also want to recognize Frank Bellotti for his work on civil rights as Massachusetts Attorney General, but also for his service in our country as a World War II veteran as well. Certainly, President Carter was a veteran, United States Navy veteran, United States Naval Academy graduate as well. And also Minister Don Muhammad played a critical role in Boston, especially during challenging times in the city, and always had a lot of credibility in Boston and did as much as anyone on economic development issues and public safety issues, including the Grove Hall Shopping Plaza in the mid, mid to late 80s. It was Minister Don and Mayeth Flynn that played the leading role on that development project. So I had the opportunity to take my parents over to Morning Star Baptist Church during the snowstorm last, well, last Friday, I believe it was, and had the opportunity to offer our condolences to his wonderful family. So Minister Don's in our prayers, Frank Bellotti and his family as well are in our prayers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of anyone who has passed? I'd also like to, as we approach the anniversary of the earthquake in Haiti, I just want to uplift my beloved uncle who passed away 15 years ago now. Michela Philippe Tontonene. We miss him every day. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Coletta Zapata, Evelyn Harzenbecker, Alfonso Di Pietro, Joey Donahue. On behalf of Counselors Durkin, myself, and the entire Boston City Council, Kyrie Ambrose. On behalf of Counsel Fitzgerald, Brian McLaughlin, David Hines Jr., Ali Pender Sr. On behalf of the entire Boston City Council, former Attorney General Francis X. Bellotti. On behalf of the entire Boston City Council, Minister Don Muhammad. On behalf of myself, City Council President Louie Jean, Dr. Charles W. Launey. Democratic State Committee Member Walter McDonough. On behalf of Counsel Pepe, Francis Frank Bach. On behalf of Counsel Orell, Julia Bradley. On behalf of the entire Boston City Council, former President Jimmy Carter and the victims of the New Orleans terrorist attack. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourned today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayonella Chamber on Wednesday, January 15, 2025, at 12:00 noon. Welcome back. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk, and the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned. And thank you so much, Neil, for covering for Dossie and for during the clock. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.[1778.33][1778.33]